...here as their webmaster, report TS 2012-25, UCU Transit Agreement and the related bylaw. My daughter's a Brock student and bylaw 2012-29, I'm in the property circulation area.
Okay? Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none. First off, we've got presentations and deputations and first on the docket is Don Jackson. Don is Don here, where's Don? Oh, oh, oh my gosh, General Block. Could somebody close the door back there behind General Block, please? We welcome the general, the council.
Your worship, councilors, senior staff, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your foresight in putting me on first because I am awfully hot. I don't know how they survived wearing this kind of outfit. The bicentennial of the War of 1812 is just about upon us. Official opening ceremonies will be next month, mid-next month, and a lot of activities have been planned to take place through the bicentennial years of 2012, 2013, and 2014. I am here to just update you very quickly on what has been happening in Niagara Falls. You may remember that Niagara Falls was first off the block as far as planning for the bicentennial was concerned because people were not aware of what other municipalities might have been doing. Our biggest single project, the largest capital project in the whole region, is the Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project. And that project is, has been a challenge, but its ultimate completion will be something that the city of Niagara Falls will enjoy for years and years to come. The revitalization and expansion of the Niagara, what was known as the Lundys Lane Historical Museum, now the Niagara Falls History Museum, the construction portion of that is complete. The exhibitory has now started to be moved in. Very exciting stuff, a lot of hands-on, interactive stuff for both children as well as adults. And the, all of the artifacts that have been temporarily located at the armory are slowly but surely being relocated to their new home. Be sure to mark July 21st, 2012, on your calendars. That is the date of the grand opening. The grand opening will be a fun event for the whole community, a fun, free event for the whole community, as well as the typical kinds of things that happen at grand openings, a few of the, very few of the speeches from the major donors to this particular project and the typical ribbon cutting. We are going to be ready to welcome not only just the Niagara Falls community, but anybody who wants to come. It's an exciting place. Niagara Falls is really, they're very, very fortunate to have a community museum facility like the one that we have now. This building is going to become a hub for community activity, not only just for museum activities, but for the historic Drummondville area for sure and for others who wish to use the facilities that we will now have. Make sure you spread the word and make sure you come on the 21st of July. Our fundraising, as you may remember, we committed to raise half of the municipal share of the cost of this $12 million project. So our, of our $2 million, we are at the point of approximately $1.3 million now. And in an economic era that we are in, I think we have been extremely fortunate. We've done that through not only personal donations from individuals, but also through large corporate donations. And we have done it through naming opportunities of various galleries and facilities within the museum. As a very short plug, we still have three significant opportunities for individuals, businesses, corporations to come on board. One of them is our exhibit workshop, something that was never in the old building, but is absolutely essential for the preservation of artifacts. Our artifact storage area, you will, you will be wowed when you, when you see it. It is state of the art, but it's absolutely necessary to preserve the artifacts that relate to the history of this great city. And the final one is the theater. And the theater, to me, is the grand naming opportunity. It's something like the Lamar's Room in the, in the Victoria Avenue Library. All activities that take place in that theater, whether they're programming activities, whether they're community groups, whatever is taking place, will always carry the name of the sponsor of that building. So those, those are there just in case any of you in this room or any of you who are watching might be interested. Part of our fundraising is the carrying out of a number of events. And our latest event, and the main reason I'm here tonight, is called the Great Niagara Portage Adventure. And in this event, teams of four to eight people will travel a 5K route, starting and ending at Oaks Park, but traveling for a significant portion of it along the original Queenston to Lewiston, uh, Queenston to Chippewa, sorry, portage route. They, each team will carry a canoe, can be real, can be homemade, and each member of each team will carry a backpack with food items that will be donated to Project Share at the end of the event. And of course, you'll hear just a little bit later on from the women who care for Project Share, they will be on site to receive the donations from them. We already have had the mayor in a photo op in front of the museum, carrying a small portion of a canoe. The others complained a little bit that you didn't carry your weight, but we hope that perhaps in, within this wonderful group of both councilors and staff, that you might consider entering a team for this particular event. We still have room and we'd, we would love to have you. So on June the 9th, at Oaks Park, we will have teams embarking on their own recreation of part of the Queenston to, excuse me, Queenston to Chippewa portage route, one of the activities of our own Niagara Falls Task Force. Well, Mr. Chair, I think that brings everybody up to date on what is going on. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of council for the general?
Well, General, we appreciate you coming in and promoting everything, especially the June 9th portage event. I know we've often been up a creek without a paddle, I don't know if we've had a canoe or not, but, and the July 21st Niagara History Museum opening, and I know that we're all going to be there, and we're very, very excited and appreciate all your hard work and your committee on doing all the fundraising because that's a lot of work and for something like this to happen, it takes a big commitment that you've made and your committee's made. And we want to say thank you very much for all that you've done. And it's obvious you're committed, just by virtue of the fact that you're dressed the way you are in this council chamber. We want to thank you very much. Thank you very much for all your support.
Before you run away, where it looks like we might have a team. Counselor Gates?
I, I thought that the mayor, because he'd already practiced carrying the canoe once already, would put this motion forward, but I, I think that we should participate and put a team together. I know Vic likes to run and do that stuff, maybe he could be our captain. And with my fellow councilors, I would like to do that with staff. I think that would be a great idea to kick this event off at Oaks Park. So I'd move a motion that we gather a team between council and staff and maybe other city employees if that's what it takes, but I, I think we should have a team in this event for sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Gates. We're looking for a second. I know Counselor Carrio, is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, then we'll call a vote, all those in favor. Okay, it's unanimous, General. You do have a team.
That's wonderful. I think you're going to be in it just for the prizes because the prizes are incredible.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on the deputations are, we've got Jay Mason from the Chippewa Public Dock Committee, he's going to address us on some fundraising that he has. Welcome, Jay.
Hi, thanks. Mayor, council, staff, I'd just like to update first on the activities of Chippewa Public Dock Committee in concert with the city of Niagara Falls on our proposed new public dock facility beside the Whitman Bridge, as you enter Chippewa on the right-hand side. The dock will be around 120 feet long. David Antinson from the city of Niagara Falls has been working diligently, beavering away with a, with engineering staff, et cetera, to put us in a position to get our construction permit. So those guys have been working pretty diligently in the background for us. In the meantime, we've been working on fundraising activities and we're about 93 or 94 percent there on our fundraising. We have a couple of fundraising events that we're going to mention right now. One, our run that we need a little bit of support as we had from last year from the city, and the other would be our Mom You Rock Dinner Dance this Saturday night at Chippewa Fire Hall. We still have some tickets available. It's a prime rib dinner, there's raffles, 50/50, spot dances, draws, et cetera. It's going to be a good time and refreshments start at 5:30. The other thing I'd like to say is a personal thank you to Dean and Jeff, they've really, really jumped into the task here. And I know they're pretty busy on a normal day, but they've always been there for us every time we've called and it's gone a long way towards facilitating our ability to do what we've done because, as you know, it's great to have a good idea and certainly as Counselor Thompson has said many times, this is a long overdue proposal of renewal, but the, the highlight of the renewal in Chippewa certainly being the new bridge, which is fantastic. But this just continues that trend and without the ability to execute, you know, things don't tend to go very far and it's very difficult for a nonprofit like ourselves to function in, in fresh air. So we've always been able to call on these guys, they've been there every time and we really, really appreciate it. The other thing now I'd like to call up Ben Newell, who's with Tim Hortons and who is responsible for our run.
Thank you, your worship and council. I'm here to request once again that the city supports our second annual run for the docks. That's a 5K run and a 1K fun walk on Sunday, June 24th, 2012. St. John's Ambulance has committed to us for assistance as well as Cold Stone Cramery is providing ice cream at the end of the race and there's hamburgers and refreshments at the boathouse as well. And we're going to have live bands. So I'm just hoping that the city can once again support us and with some fees involved, which is some road closures for about three hours on that date. So consider that. Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you. Counselor Thompson?
We move a motion to support the run and do the appropriate thing through our municipal staff.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Is there any comments to the motion or to our presenters? Okay, then we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, it's unanimous, again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your event down there, it's looking good and it's, like you said, long overdue and it'll be nice to have everything completed. Congratulations, 93 to 94 percent, that's fantastic. Now, on to the 12 women who care for Project Share and spokesperson for the group is Regional Counselor Barbara Greenwood. Welcome, council, to the council, Barbara.
Thank you very much.
What about the rest of you ladies? Are you not going to all join us or? Come on up, ladies.
I'm down.
Not you, Tom, the ladies.
Come on, ladies.
Come on up, girls.
We have eight of us here tonight.
Eight, okay.
Yes. We're all busy ladies, so to get eight out is a, it's a bonus, you're right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. Welcome to all the lovely ladies and the not-so-lovely lady with the suit jacket.
Your worship, councilors, members of the gallery, I'd like to first of all say what a pleasure it is to be here tonight. My, the first thing I'd like to say is I want to say a big thank you to the employers who have allowed our ladies to spend five days for this great benefit for Project Share and from a Friday till a Tuesday. And it's, we're very, very grateful for them to give us the time to do this. We were first created in 2011 and as you know, after a very successful 2009, 2010, the 10 men in a tent, the ladies decided to take on the challenge, which we did very successfully and we raised over $155,000. We have 12 very community-minded people. This year, we have three new people who will be joining us and I will introduce them later. And there's a few pictures here that you'll all enjoy. You each have a disc at your desk, so you can enjoy it at your leisure. We were very inspired, the third or fourth, it was the fourth day on a Monday morning, the weather was kind of hot and humid and a big city bus drove into Oaks Park. Off the bus came about 30 students from Simcoe Street School, one of the poorest schools in the Niagara, in the Niagara area. We were brought to tears. The young kids that came off that bus either had a box of food or a bag of food and they said to us, "We couldn't afford money, but we brought food." Wow, it just, it just set chills up, just chills, we just got goosebumps from this. And, and as you can see, we couldn't let them go, we fed them their lunch and we enjoyed such a great morning. They went out actually to four other schools and brought in more food for us. It was, we were very inspired by, by this and again, this year, with the help of the teacher Laura, Lorna Lane, she will be doing this with us again this year. So we're looking forward to that and also many more surprises, I'm sure. As you can see, Dan was there with his train, brought over 5,000 pounds of food on the Friday night, headed up by the, the fire department PT Cruiser and the siren going and that was again, it was a very big surprise to us, again, more inspirational things that were happening. This was just the beginning and we were, every day we were surprised by more events. It was wonderful. I think the next picture, yes, and we had, oh, we had the fire department, they stopped by. We were joined by people that we never expected to see. They just dropped in unexpectedly and gave us great surprises. This was one of the events, I think this was the day we left the tent and went home to get all cleaned up for the event on the 12th, the evening at Club Italia. We were inspired by the Filipino community, they came and cooked food and the Italian, the Club Italia came and cooked food and needless to say, we didn't go without good, healthy food. Anna Caruso is a new lady on our team this year, Mary Calendriello, Lucy Fortino is here with us tonight, myself, Sue Kors, Coral O'Leary is here, Nicole Madden is here, Kim Rossi from 105.1, she couldn't make it tonight, Mary Stack from the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority isn't here with us tonight, Kathy Tesoulas from RE/MAX, she's with us, Sarah Vasquez is with us, and Nancy Wales. And I want to say a big thank you to these ladies who, given of their time for a great organization. This was our kickoff event at Dawn Cherry's last Thursday evening and we had over 300 people attend and again, thank you very much to the community for this great support.
Thank you.
We have, again, very, a great deal of attractions on every day and a Sunday is our big spa day. Again, we started Niagara, we're going to continue with that again. And if anybody that's portaging feels a little warm after they finish their portage, we do have a dunk tank. So I do invite each and every one of you, if you'd like to partake in that event, we'd be more than happy to and I'm sure maybe the public would be too. Spa day, that, as I say, that's the Sunday and we'll be having many events going on that day. So please join us for a fun-filled four days, five days. And I believe that's, that's it. The funds and food, of course, are being raised will enable Project Share to provide emergency support services to low-income families. And I'm sure you're all aware of the amount of food that goes through Project Share. Over 600,000 pounds of food is, is brought in and spread around to families that are in need and it's such a worthwhile, worthwhile cause. This is one of the volunteers with Project Share. And also with us this evening is our new coordinator, her name is Pamela Sharp, she is the Community Development Coordinator. And also we have with us is Tom Snodgrass and he is a board member with Project Share and a volunteer extraordinaire. And we thank these two people for attending with us tonight and this is Tom, a little bachelor in the background, that's Tom Snodgrass. If you could go back to that one slide, please. I, I just want to say that, I'm going to repeat these things, I might be behind bars, I mean, I would have to cut down on what I eat or go without, I would go to the soup kitchen more, more often, I don't know, I don't know my groceries I buy, I have to pay my rent and bills, just don't last the month. These are some of the things that Project Share and the people that work for Project Share here on a daily basis. And the thanks goes out to all the people who volunteer, both on the board and volunteers like our, like the team we have here today. And it's a very worthwhile organization and we certainly are very pleased to have them. And we are looking forward to our June 8th to June 12th and we invite each and every one of you to join us on those days and for fun-filled events. And thank you very, very much for this, this opportunity to present this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And are there any comments or questions from council? Well, ladies, we appreciate what you're doing and we say, you know, there's a lot of things you can do without and food's not one of them. So we appreciate you taking time out of your valuable, personal time to give toward the community, it means a lot. And hopefully this year, the weather will be a little more cooperative than the tornado that came through last year. And I told you to go home, but you guys stuck it out.
No, 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 we weren't going to do that.
Well, I mean, that's good, that was very admirable. But on behalf of the council, we want to say thank you for your commitment, for doing this another year and I'm sure a lot of people are counting on your success and will be there to support you and, and as I've agreed, I will be in that dunk tank as well. We're not telling anyone with a good arm, but I would encourage anyone in the community that, to, to come out and mark that in your calendar, June 8th to 12th, come out to Oaks Park and participate, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun to participate and you're doing a good thing. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, we now have a presentation from Matthew Sisco, counselor from city of St. Catharines, and he's going to talk to us about governance. Welcome, Matthew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council, senior staff and residents of Niagara Falls. My name's Matthew Sisco, I am a, a neighboring city counselor from the city of St. Catharines as well as the chair of the St. Catharines Governance Review Committee. It's my hope tonight to give you an idea of what our Governance Review Committee is doing and also to encourage you to take similar action in the near future with respect to governance. During the 2010 municipal election, the topic of governance review was a regular feature on the doorstep in, in St. Catharines, as I'm sure it was throughout the region. Indeed, since the election, it's continued to dominate the debate. Many residents are expressing clearly that they believe the time has come for the over-representation and over-governing to end in Niagara. And many believe that this will lead to greater accountability and more streamlining of the services which municipal government currently controls. Chamber of Commerce in the Niagara region has been especially vocal, to name one group, in this debate and the introduction of the new regional supplement in, in the Sun Media newspapers has also added fuel to the fire. Early in 2011, St. Catharines City Council directed staff to set up a Governance Review Committee and we've been meeting now for several months on a monthly basis. Committee is made up of three city councilors, two regional councilors from St. Catharines, as well as three residents of the city. Because basically any scenario that involves changing our governance structure requires the approval of regional council and given the fact that the region currently is focusing on governance review, reform as well, we felt it was important to have representation of both levels, municipal government on the committee. To this point, the committee's focus has been on gathering information related to past governance reforms in Niagara and St. Catharines in particular, as well as examining all of the possible options to reform governance that currently exists in Ontario. The different options run the gamut of possibility. At this point, we've talked about everything from a double-direct elected representative who would serve on city and regional council full-time, all the way to a regional ward system. We've also discussed strictly changing the way St. Catharines elects its city councilors. We're really trying to keep all ideas on the table at this point and we've taken the time to look outside of our own personal opinions and the opinions expressed with us from residents. We've engaged experts such as Dave Siegel at the Niagara Community Observatory at Brock University. We're actually currently looking at the idea of commissioning the observatory to, to help us in our review and help us with writing the final report. We believe that other municipalities could also benefit by joining with us in the project. We're also looking for other people with experience in the area of governance review. Your own city clerk has offered to come and speak on the experience of moving from a ward system to an at-large system. So right now, our main goal and our main focus is to take in as much information as we can. That brings me to the main purpose of my visit tonight and my presentation. We're trying to encourage your council as well as the other city councils throughout the region to engage in the process. As I mentioned, the region's currently undertaking a governance review and through conversations with my fellow St. Catharines councilors as well as my limited conversations with councilors within the region, it's my belief that the 12 municipalities that make up the region would be better served by being involved with the debate and the consultations early on, not only with the region, but also with each other. My colleagues and I would like to have this dialogue with you and with other city councilors in the region because we believe as the representatives closest to the residents of Niagara, we have a very strong idea of what direction those residents expect us to take. I also want to take this, this time right now to state for the record, it's not my intention or the committee's intention to appear to be trying to steer, steer the debate in the city of St. Catharines. We're actually taking the opposite tact. Our, our committee has discussed the idea that each community is going to have a different idea of what will work best in terms of governance reform. It's not our goal to dictate one idea over another idea, we simply want to have a conversation amongst ourselves so that if, if and when the region does decide to alter the governance structure, they do it knowing that each of the member municipalities in Niagara have discussed it, have spent time and energy looking at the options and that each of us are unwilling to simply accept a decision or an idea that's been passed down from on high. If the region does prove unwilling to make changes to the governance structure that are identified through the local municipal review committees, a large group of municipalities involved in the conversation would, would give us a firmer footing to approach the province if the region chooses not to act and ask that they investigate changes that can be made that have been brought forward from the member municipalities. The process is not a quick one, I believe it can bear fruit in the end, though. Niagarians have identified a number of issues they see with how our region is governed and it's our role as elected officials most closely attuned with the electorate, both to listen and also to collaborate with the residents and other elected officials to find solutions to the problems. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening and I invite you once again on behalf of St. Catharines Governance Review Committee to join our conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sisco. We've got comments, okay, we've got Counselor Carrio and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much, Counselor, for your presentation. During your preamble, you were talking about some possibilities on what the possible recommendations might be. I didn't hear you mention the elimination of regional government as one of the possible. I hear that all the time from people in the community that the regional government has not done what they had said it was going to do, which was to eliminate a lot of the duplication of services, that a lot of people think that it is the duplication of services and it costs us a lot more money than what we had before. So is that on the table as well?
I, you're correct, I didn't mention it specifically, mostly because it tends to inflame the conversation, but in terms of everything in between, it is something that's been discussed and Dr. Siegel from Brock was actually quite informative in, in part of that debate and talking about it. So as I said, we've really taken nothing off the table. And in fact, at this point, that's been a specific... In fact, at this point, that's been a specific goal of mine as Chair of the committee, is I don't want us to eliminate any possibility, and that is most definitely a possibility.
Your worship, just to follow up, because also, you know, I'm sure you've heard the things that we've heard, is that that level of government is unaccountable. Most people don't even know who the regional council reps are, completely opposite to everyone calls the municipal councillors and the municipal mayor.
Good point. Thank you, councillor Thompson. And then Ianone.
Yes. First of all, thank you for being here, and I've thought several times since I've heard the governance issue again being discussed at the regional level, and really, if they're sincere about actually tackling this issue, which has been discussed for the last probably 30 years, I think it's incumbent upon each municipality to form such a committee, and I think it's appropriate with the discussion we're having tonight to move forward with that. I'm glad that you've identified that Mr. Ira Fida is going to come and talk to you, because I don't think there's any question that this municipality was certainly far-sighted when they went from a ward system, which didn't work, in my opinion, and also to reduce the council from 12 to eight, showed a great deal of leadership. And if the rest of the municipalities did that, that would certainly be a step forward. Certainly amalgamation is extremely important. In fact, my personal view is three large municipalities within the region, and the elimination of regional government with the appropriate police commission, health department, and a committee or coalition to look after public services. So there's lots of options around. I think the topic is appropriate at this time, particularly when we have two and a half years to go before we get to another election. And I think this municipality better become involved and have their input, because hopefully something is going to change. And we appreciate you coming here and bringing this to our attention, and hopefully we can eliminate some of the duplication and overlapping and cost to the taxpayer, which exists at the present time.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming to speak to council, but I'll say I don't share councillor Thompson's ideas quite as closely. I will say that I think...
And she didn't at the time.
Yeah, and I still don't on the ward system. But I will say, I was a firm believer that eight would not work, and that has proven me wrong. Eight works really well. I thought it would make more work. It did make more work, but we dispersed it. I will say, if Mr. Ira Fida wants to go speak on anything, perhaps this is a reduction from 12 to eight as opposed to the ward system, but he'll speak on what he chooses. I will say that I think it's an independent municipality's idea. My first thought when he started to speak was, go home. I mean, I grew up in St. Catharines. I lived my whole life in Merit until I moved here. I was born and bred in St. Catharines, and you're sitting here, I've been here 20 years now, this is my city, and all I could think of was, we've done this, go home. I really think we govern well. I think that I knocked on 20,000 doors through an election, lost lots of weight doing it, and was really happy to know that not one household told me, reduce your council. I don't talk about other levels of government. I'm not going to diss my own regional councillors door-to-door. I did hear who's running for the region. I never endorse anybody when I'm going door-to-door. But I will say that I didn't have, I didn't hear that through the last election. Councillor Wing and I went door-to-door together for many, many days, and if it wasn't the hospital issue, Matt Child Pediatrics, which we'll discuss later, and/or taxes, there wasn't an issue. So I'm not so sure that we should get in this, other than my first thought was that the bigger city, will we be swallowed up? And they're leading this to lead the charge for an amalgamation. I'm skeptic. I've been here a long time. I'm just saying, I don't want to see it that. I don't want people at home to think that we're taking on an issue right now in a fiscal economic crisis, and we have so many things to handle here. Is it an issue in Niagara Falls? I haven't heard it. Maybe you did, but I didn't. I didn't hear a problem with the governance of this city. And Vic's shaking his head. I didn't hear it. And we asked a lot of questions. We had a lot, we met a lot of people, and that wasn't an issue. Regional council is a different issue. Your local councils, I mean, we work hard, and I don't want to see the ideas of a big city swallowing up the little cities. I mean, we can't agree to amalgamate hospitals, let alone to amalgamate cities, and I just think this is a fight we don't need to take, because we haven't had a problem.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wing.
Councillor Ianone forgot Rhodes. That was another big one for the people we saw at the doors, and I have to reflect what she said. I don't think anybody at all raised governance, and I know there were some days I was out six, seven hours knocking on doors, and it just was not an issue that came up. I think we have a lot of other things to focus our time and energies on, and governance just isn't one of them.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, well, seeing none, we appreciate you coming down here, and I know it can be a prickly topic at times, and obviously, there's different opinions, but like a nose, right? Everyone has one, so we appreciate and wish you well at all the other councils.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councillor.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our planning matters, I would ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit an expansion of a proposed multipurpose building at Heartland Forest, Niagara. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Tuesday, April 10th, 2012, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
All right, thank you. I'd ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hrlavich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. As the city clerk said, these lands are, the lands occupied by Heartland Forest, actually a portion of the lands. The southwest corner of Brown Road and Kaler Road is a site-specific zoning for Heartland Forest. It's a recreational-commercial zone. This is the area that's outlined in blue, and that's the area that we're dealing with with this amendment. To the east side of the property is the city's Montrose Business Park. North of the Brown Road is the Warren Woods Development. And to the west and south are additional lands owned by Heartland Forest, which are predominantly nature trails and related structures. The application before council is to increase the floor area of the proposed multipurpose building. It's a Y-shaped building in the middle of the slide in front of you. The current zoning permits a 500-square-meter building, which is about 5,000 square feet, and they're proposing a 1,400-square-meter, or, yeah, square-meter building, which is about 15,000 square feet. They're seeking a number of other zoning changes as well. They want to reduce the landscape strip between the road and the parking lot from 15 meters down to five meters. And they're also seeking to lift the holding provisions that apply to the land. The, as I mentioned, it's a portion of the land, so the amendment itself is for 26 acres of land that is part of the much larger Heartland Forest. Currently, the zoning on the property permits up to 195 trailer sites, the multipurpose building, as I mentioned, as well as a number of accessory buildings and so on. There is a holding provision on the site that relates to the requirement for adequate stormwater, sanitary sewers, and water services. The applicant's requesting the increase in building size, reduction of landscaping, and lifting of the holdings, I mentioned. The city's official plan designates the area as a special policy area 35, and a portion of the lands are zoned recreational, commercial, and environmental protection. The site-specific policies also apply to the redevelopment, or the development for the resort commercial. The first phase is the establishment of the trails and the building of a multipurpose building, museum, and interpretive center. Looking at the zoning, the multipurpose building is already a permitted use. We're looking at increasing the floor area, which can be supported. They want to decrease the landscape strip, which can also be supported, since the original wider strip was to protect the trailers, and that strip will remain at 50 meters in that area. There also, we've also suggested that there be a 30-meter building setback requirement from the wetland boundary that affects the property. There is a holding provision on this property. It can now be lifted for the sanitary and storm, sanitary and water, because there are those services along Kaler Road now. There is a stormwater management plan that has been submitted by the proponent, and it demonstrates that most of the stormwater can be accommodated through roadside ditches and French drains. There is a requirement that we get the approval of SciTech and the NPCA for the stormwater pond. We are recommending that the provincially significant wetlands on the area also be zoned environmental protection area, although this was not a request of the proponents. The staff is supportive of the application, and as I stated, they comply with the official plan. Sanitary and water services are now available. We're recommending, as I said, the EPA zone for wetlands and a 30-meter setback from those wetlands. Therefore, we are recommending the application to this council. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hrlavich. Are there any questions from members of council? Yes, councillor Thompson.
Yes, we just received correspondence tonight regarding SciTech. Have you taken that into consideration with your comments? Is that going to complicate the issue? How can we try to expedite this?
We just received those comments at 4:00 this afternoon as well, so we were unaware of their requirements. Excuse me, I think the solicitor for the applicant is actually going to address those with council, so I'll leave it for him.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34 and 19 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Yes, sir? If you'd like to step up to the podium, please. Could you please state your name and your address?
Thank you, your worship. My name is Florrie Massey, and I live at 5571 Hotch Avenue here in Niagara Falls. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak on this application. I would like to say that I'm in full support and in favor of this application for many reasons. I was the president of the Tender Wishes Foundation for 12 years, and presently on the board of the Boys and Girls Club here in Niagara Falls. So please believe me when I say to you, I know firsthand the importance and the benefits and the needs that Heartland Forest has provided and continues to provide the residents of this community. From the children with physical and mental challenges, to parents, the rest of their families, the schools that bring children to partake in the programs that are offered at Heartland Forest, to seniors that visit Heartland Forest, many of them with the same physical and mental challenges that some of the children have. Since its inception, look at what has been created at Heartland Forest by Mr. Dan Bowman and his tireless, devoted volunteers. We all know about the barrier-free and accessible amenities such as the pathways to the forest, the world's largest treehouse, the playgrounds, the mini-pot, the fishing ponds, the events that's held there, and of course, the wonderful programs that are offered that so many children and adults in our area can benefit and continue to benefit from. The preservation of the flora and fauna at Heartland Forest, and of course, the preservation of the caribou and forest is very important and valuable to all of us. This property provides a place for kids and adults to come and experience nature at its best, to come and learn and to appreciate nature, on what this property is offering all of us. This property provides us a safe place to walk, to relax, and to enjoy. It's a place that provides a sense of peace, a spiritual tranquility to all that enjoy the forest and the programs that's offered at Heartland Forest. This property is a treasure of Niagara. Let's think about the possible positive effects this also could have on tourism here in Niagara. It's another place for people to come and see, many of which have already started coming from out of town, and I'm sure that Dan can tell you of a number of people that have come from out of town to visit Heartland Forest. The application before at Heartland Forest will benefit the whole Niagara region for many, many years, and as a lifelong resident and lifelong volunteer of the city, I hope that you support this application set forth by Heartland Forest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Massey. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who would like to speak to council tonight? Okay. Council will now hear from the applicant and his or her representative. Welcome, Mr. Bowman.
Florrie sets up already about the tourist. As a local businessman, and many of us are involved with the tourist industry, I just want to give you just a tiny little story. I'll be real brief. Last year at the pumpkin fest, we had a family out there, and I had a little girl, 14, 15 years old, with a disability. So I went up to them, and I says, how are you doing? You know? And I says, how did you make out at the Special Olympics? And they looked at me kind of strange. Special Olympics? She wasn't in the Special Olympics, the mom says. This was the whole family. So they were all looking at me, kind of funny. I said, well, aren't you from Port Robinson? Didn't I sponsor you through Dan's Brothers for the Special Olympics? Oh, it wasn't me. It wasn't us. And they told me they were from Scarborough, and they were there with the whole family for the weekend. That's why I said, as a tourist, and so many of us depend on the tourist trade, that's, I thought it was kind of neat to hear that they came here for the weekend, so they got to eat, they got to sleep, and, well, as a businessman, you know how the mind goes.
Oh, yeah.
The next thing I want to thank you, your worship, and your staff from Parks and Recreation, because of course, we were honored, and you were there. We received the Innovation Award for Parks and Forest, our team did, for all of Ontario. So a special thank you to your staff at Parks and Recreation, because that was quite an honor. And the other thank you is to so many of us, and many of the communities, and organizations like March Dimes, Special Olympics, and so on, who wrote some beautiful support letters to the federal government and supported this grant. Two ladies came to see us all the way from Ottawa, this is what we were all about, and they were excited. And then they let the cat out of its bag. There was 355 applications for this grant, and there was five, five in a la Canada who got awarded this grant, and we were one of them. So it was because of the community behind me again, like always, it was the letters, and the help of our Mr. Nicholson, of course. So I want to thank you for that. And we have a new family moved recently into Niagara Falls, or in Queenston, and Elizabeth and her husband are here, Peter, Elizabeth and Peter, Graham live in Queenston, and Elizabeth is our executive director. And maybe, if you allow me, maybe she can introduce herself and say a few words about any questions I can all ask.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Well, as he mentioned, we moved here a few years ago, and our family was just delighted to discover Heartland Forest. It was actually our son, Zachary, who's 19, who was on a field trip with Autism Ontario, that introduced us to the forest, and we felt firsthand that community spirit, the attitude that everyone's welcome. It was really special to discover Heartland Forest. And they, as you all know, it goes way beyond their trademark of physical accessibility. It is a place that celebrates all abilities. And I, soon after that first visit, I began volunteering with them, and when we received the wonderful news last August that we were successful in our grant application with the Enabling Accessibility Fund, Dan didn't mention this, but there was 355 applications across Canada for this mid-size grant, and we were, five of them were selected across Canada, and we were one of them. So we feel completely honored. We're excited. We stand before you tonight, acknowledging that this is a new phase for Heartland Forest... We stand before you tonight acknowledging that this is a new phase for Heartland Forest and we are ready for it and we're excited. We are, I can't wait for you to see the building. There's a, you're going to enter, it's going to have beautiful rustic appeal and as you come in, there's a Discovery Atrium with three wings and one of the things that was central to our application was the work placements and a day program for adults with disabilities and of course, that is very near and dear to my heart. So it was an honor for me to accept the invitation to be their first executive director last September. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Carolyn? Counselor Iainoni's got a question?
No, thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's almost an honor to stand up and move this recommendation. I mean, I spent, pardon me, I know. I spent a lot of time out there last summer with my granddaughter and my son volunteered out there and it is a wonderful place and I just have to congratulate you because it just gets better all the time and outside of the tourist appeal, it has such a huge local appeal and it's wonderful up there. So I just wanted to say congratulations.
Yes, and just before we close the public meeting, we'll see if there's any other comments from the applicant because...
Fair enough. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Patrick Maloney, I'm associate lawyer with Sullivan Manning. So I'm batting cleanup tonight. You've heard all the great things about Heartland Forest and the things that they're doing and the proposals that they have for the property. I'm going to get into a bit of the nitty-gritty of it. With respect to planning principles, the staff supported, the planning staff supported. The zoning bylaw amendment itself is good land use planning. As Mr. Hrlavich said, it's not a newly permitted use, it is just an expansion of what is currently permitted on the property. Primarily, that's what we're asking for. With respect to the planning report, we do agree with the recommendations in the report with one exception. The sketch as shown on the screen up here indicates an area is being designated as an EPA zone. This was put on the sketch to indicate where the Ministry of Natural Resources believes a provincially significant wetland exists and that's done through this overlay mapping. We're not denying that PSW exists in this area, but we'd like to point out that these lands haven't been formally designated as such in any plans. Essentially, Heartland Forest does not want this area indicated as EPA zone to actually be rezoned as EPA. Not that we don't think that it is an environmentally conservation area, we just don't, we're asking it not to be rezoned as that. Unfortunately, this delineation may not reflect the practical reality as to what the site-specific situation is. This area is in dispute and remains in dispute. At this point, on this particular application, this issue as to whether this area is rezoned as EPA does not have to be determined. In creating the plan, we respected what might be the EPA designation and you see, we had enough room to put in where the proposed building exists and obviously, it doesn't infringe into that EPA's area. The decision over whether these lands are, should actually be rezoned as EPA does not have to be made at this point on this particular application. With respect to, oh, sorry, the idea behind the rezoning of EPA is to protect environmentally sensitive lands. Quite frankly, everything that Heartland Forest is all about is about protecting environmentally sensitive lands and providing an opportunity for the, those lands to be used, including the specific area. Mr. Hrlavich did mention that there was comments that came in from SciTech and I wish to address those. The comments did come in just before four o'clock this afternoon. It's kind of a little bit discouraging for my clients to receive these comments at such a late time because we don't have the opportunity to address it other than before you right now. Our clients by all means have a great relationship with SciTech and have been in discussions with SciTech throughout this whole process. So SciTech essentially in their letter asked for two conditions to be imposed and we asked that you respectfully disregard them, not because they're not without merit, but because they can be addressed or already have been addressed. The first condition asked for a height restriction to two stories. In my submission, that's not necessary. There already is a zoning bylaw amendment, or zoning bylaw approval for this property that was made in 2005 that restricts the height requirement to 10 meters. As well, the adjacent lands to the north, north of Brown Road are the Warren Woods property and there's an OPA approval for three stories. So with respect to the request for two stories, that's not necessary. We already have a height restriction. The second request that's made by SciTech requires us to establish some sort of evacuation protocol. I would submit to you that this is something that can be discussed with SciTech, but this requirement doesn't need to be imposed at this stage. We are, we have applied for site plan approval. We submitted the application about a week and a half ago and I'd submit that that's the appropriate stage to do that. So I ask that the condition requested by, the two conditions requested by SciTech be not included in your approval. So at the end of the day, on behalf of Mr. Bowman and Ms. Graham, I ask that you approve the recommendation set out in the city's planning report, save and accept number three listed on that report with respect to the recommendation to rezone those lands as EPA. And I also, as I mentioned, I ask that you disregard the conditions requested by SciTech. Subject to any questions that you may have, those are my submissions.
Okay, first, we're going to get Mr. Hrlavich just to comment on the idea of dropping recommendation number three and then we've got Counselor Thompson, Iainoni and, is he here over here? No? Okay. Okay. Okay, no? Okay. Morocco? Okay, okay. Yes, Mr. Hrlavich?
Your worship, the solicitor is correct. The Heartland Forest had requested that the environmental policies under OPA 96 be deferred for these lands, so those have yet to be fully fleshed out. We were moving ahead because these lands were shown on their site plan, but we can catch all of that up at a later stage, so I, I'm fine with that request.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
I was just going to wait for you to close the meeting and make the motion.
Okay. Is there any other questions of the applicant or his agent? Okay? No? Then if not, the public meeting with respect to the zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counselor Thompson?
I would make the motion to approve the application one and two and disregard the comments of SciTech at this particular time.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Iainoni. Is there any discussion to the motion? Counselor Gates?
Just real quick to, I have to agree that it gets extremely disappointing to the council as well when this comes before us at four o'clock in the afternoon of our council meeting, so I'm certainly going to support the motion.
Okay, fair enough. You've heard all the comments. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? And we have a conflict by Counselor Winn, so it's unanimous. So congratulations. Now, Dan, I know we've said this many times, but you know, you've chosen, maybe you can stand up for a second and come to the mic, but you know, you've chosen, you've made a decision in your life, you could be living in a condo in some far-off warm land year-round or you can reinvest in your community and provide a great service to people with special needs and their families and you chose the latter and really, we're really proud of you and real glad that you chose Niagara Falls as the place to do it and that you just continue to, you give back. And like you say, you came here with not too much in your pocket and good work ethic and some good ideas and a big heart and you've been very, very successful in business and you're giving back to your community and you probably never, ever know the way that you've touched so many lives. So I know on behalf of this council, we're very, very happy and excited to be able to support and approve a planning amendment like that. So congratulations.
Thank you, your worship.
Well, it's not every day that you get a standing ovation in this council.
I cannot tell you how rewarding it is when you see busloads, March Dimes, survivors of stroke, brain injury, injury clinic, they don't want to go home because of the smiles you put on those people's faces. And good Lord willing, if I have my health, I'll make the same promise I did to Mr. Nicholson with the federal government, this will be a building we'll be very proud of for the whole community in Niagara Falls and not just Dan because I do it for all people. So thank you again. What a beautiful night for us. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Thank you. Ready, Ben? Seth?
Our favorite part of the meeting. Counselor Peter Angelo.
I'm just trying to set a topic in the city.
There's people coming back.
They're all from God speaking before.
They're going home now to go to bed.
They're going to get pushed away down.
He puts us.
You going to defer it again?
Okay, thank you, your worship. Getting into budget matters, I know the Director of Finance is going to make a presentation on capital needs and debt management. I believe that Mr. Harrison was getting into financing strategy for the city before and it was deferred and I think that was probably about a month ago and so it's back in front of council now. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Harrison.
So basically, the last, the last time we talked about this issue, we were asked to come back, look at a proposal by Counselor Peter Angelo and to come back to you. So what we've provided tonight is some new information. First of all, is obviously consideration of Counselor Peter Angelo's plan, which we've labeled option three as we go through the report or the presentation. We've also included the 10-year capital, capital needs. As we've been talking about, our senior staff have been working with all of their staff to develop a 10-year capital needs forecast over the next 10 years, obviously, and so that's, that information is available. So we've now put that into the, into the presentation. The idea is that there's no real new information in option one and two, they've basically remained the same, but option three is provided for comparison. It should be noted that although we're providing three options, we're really giving you another series of options in that we can, we can modify moving forward, we can take advantage of these. These are really general directions that we're looking to receive. Obviously, as we move forward, economic conditions will change, interest rates will change. Right now, the borrowing rates are at all-time lows. I looked today at Infrastructure Ontario and the 10-year rate is, is lower, is anywhere between 2.8 and 2.9 for a municipality for 10 years. Those are historic lows, probably not to be seen again over the next 10 or 20-year horizon. And then obviously, other factors as new items come up. So basically, same type of thing as we talked about before, the accounting changes that were under PSAP 3150 requires that all municipalities put on their balance sheet, their net book value of their assets, all the things that are under the ground, above the ground. We also have the 2011, 2014 council strategic initiatives. There was three basic principles that we had there and we'll discuss those. So basically, the whole premise of the Capital Infrastructure Replacement Plan is really, what needs to be replaced? What money are we spending now and how can we spend additional money to meet these additional needs without, while meeting the council's strategic initiatives? And that's what the premise of the plan was. So when we look at what needs to be replaced, there's two approaches. The first one is basically, it's a financial modeling process and what we've done is through the PSAP process, we've purchased a data software package that identifies replacement dates of the asset, of all our assets. We've, you know, estimated what the life expectancy is and what our current spending and reserves are and we've come up with what we believe on a book basis would be the annual amount required if you were to put the amount away today for what you're going to have to spend in the future. And this is a big number. If we look at the next chart, you can see it's a very large number and it really shows that if we, based on our assets today and what their life expectancy are, these are millions of dollars, that we should really be putting away $97 million. Now, that doesn't mean that we would have that money today, that we would spend it, but we would be putting it away. When you, when you look at an asset base of approximately $830 million in assets, all of those assets, if you're going to continue to do the same types of services, will have to be replaced. And so this modeling method is really kind of like a general guideline for you. The second approach that we took, as we talked about, is a 10-year capital needs assessment. What we've asked our staff, senior staff to work with their departmental liaisons and develop what they see as the best, the optimal needs are for the next 10 years, looking at condition, looking at life expectancy and then identifying what the expected cost and timing of those costs would be. So in the next chart, you can see we've compared what the financing modeling method would be with the 10-year capital needs. You can see there's a significant difference between the accounting or financial best-case scenario or worst-case if you have to come up with the money and with what our staff has identified as what our capital expenditure needs are. The 10-year capital needs have been summarized in this presentation. The full, the full 10-year capital needs will be part of the council presentation on the capital budget, which will be on the 29th of May. But you can see that for the next three years of council, we're, we're looking at potentially required spending of $34, $31 and $28 million. Over the full 10 years, we're, our staff have put together a best guess estimate that we'd be somewhere in excess of $310 million. So the next chart summarized what are we spending right now. As you know, we have three primary sources for funding the capital, water, the water utility budget, the sewer utility budget and the general tax budget, which is the operating budget. We also receive federal gas tax money and that's been confirmed to 2014. We anticipate that'll keep going, but that they have not indicated what the amounts will be going forward. The provincial gas and the federal gas tax money, as we've talked about in the past, is strictly for infrastructure spending. So any infrastructure spending, particularly roads and bridges and those types of hard services. The gas tax money from the province is committed to annually. We receive just over $1.1 million annually. We do use some of that to offset our operating budget and so we have approximately a rounded amount of about a half a million dollars. So all told, we have approval to spend approximately $16.3 million on capital. We also have reserves, special purpose reserves, we have development reserves and as we talked about, DC reserves are for specific, specified projects. The DC reserves are for the growth-related costs. There always is a component, it could be anywhere from 40 to 20% of non-growth-related expenditures and so there is a need to come out of this area, these areas to fund new projects. So if we move to the next chart, we can see that if we took the estimated capital needs of $34 million in 2012, what we have available funding and this is what the capital infrastructure deficit is. Now, that seems like a lot of money and it is, however, every municipality is in the same boat. Every municipality, this has been an ongoing discussion across Canada, across Ontario of the amount of money that's needed to fix the existing infrastructure, everybody's in the same boat. So we are trying to find a plan that we can start to rectify this going forward. We see this as a long-term opportunity and that's why we've moved forward with the next The council's initiatives were threefold. First of all, financial sustainability of municipality, meaning you can't raise taxes and utility rates astronomically, but you also have to look after what the, your expenditure requirements are. We've tried to, tried to develop that in the last couple of years in our budgets by doing a bit more operational reviews of our operating budget. We've also attempted to look at, we've held the line on new borrowing, the borrowing, the only- the only committed borrowing they have this year is for the museum project, and that was committed to a number of years ago. So we're at an opportune time now to look at these opportunities. The two other items kind of fall out of that whole concept of sustainability, and that's to maintain competitive and reasonable tax and utility rates. As we showed in the operating budget, our tax rates continue to be very reasonable and competitive in this area. The utility rates, we were able, again, freeze the rates going forward, while at the same time continuing to commit to capital expenditures. The big item is maintaining municipal infrastructure. And as we go through the capital budget on the 29th, you'll hear that we do have pressing needs in certain areas. So this plan that we've put together is an opportunity to, when we flipped to the next chart, you can see that the staff has tried to deal with the third issue, which is how do we meet these needs and increase spending? The criteria that we've imposed upon ourselves as staff is no increase in the taxation and utility rates. We want to find an opportunity to increase funding of capital infrastructure, recognizing that the more we can spend earlier, the better it is, because we will solve some of the infrastructure deficit that we have, and maintain debt levels within acceptable provincial guidelines. As you can recall, the provincial government provides a guideline of percentages of own-source revenues, of which your debt servicing limits can be at. So, these are the three constraints that we've put on ourselves as we put these plans The three options that we've put together are simple. The first one is replace the retired debt with new debt. Most municipalities have this, some of the larger ones in our region do this exact thing. And they've done it for a number of years, because they have a rollover of their debt. So if you're retiring $3.5 million in debt, you're going to issue $3.5 million in debt and just roll it over. That's what the first plan, first option, really is. Secondly, replace the retired debt with new debt, similar to One, and reallocate the capital transfer to debt servicing. So, as you saw earlier, in the operating budget, we dedicate $4.4 million to direct transfers to capital. What we're suggesting under this methodology is we dedicate one-tenth of that, or about $400,000, leverage that, borrow additional, and get additional capital expenditures initially, and operate within the debt servicing limits. So there is no additional cost in the operating budget. The third alternative, which is what Councilor Peter Angelo proposed, and we've considered, is to take the debt servicing reductions, meaning as the debt is retired and we no longer have that payment, is to use that savings room as direct capital spending. So you're spending dollar-for-dollar. So whereas in One and Two, you're getting a little bit of a leveraging effect, in Number Three, you're reducing the debts quicker, and you're also getting a dollar-for-dollar investment. All three options are presented here. We've done some forecasting. Again, these are based on estimates, based on what the projections are, you know, interest rates. Again, the interest rates that we've used in the first couple of years are 4%, and after that, we've accelerated up to 5%. There's no way for us to predict what the interest rates are going to be, based on world climate, and not climate, world economic climate and conditions, and so we can see that, under the three options, the spending, you know, under Option Two is over 10 years, is greater, it's 5% greater than Option One. Option One is the middle, and compared to that, Option Three is 5% less than that. So again, but the benefit to Option Two is the accelerated payments in the early three years compared to the other two. The next chart shows this graphically. As you can see, in the blue, the light blue, the baby blue, is the 10-year capital needs. Our forecasts right now are, and I think that that chart really should be closer to a straight line, because as we go farther out in the years, six, seven, and eight, we'll be identifying that there'll be more needs. But right now, we should really focus on the next three to five years. We see that, under all three options, we're spending less than what our capital needs are. So any opportunity to spend a little bit more within the constraints we've imposed, staff's position is that's a better option, but all three options do provide with spending. You can see graphically how, under Option Three, as the debt's retired over time, it ends up that you're spending more in the year than the other options. Moving to the next chart, we can see what the impact on the debt is. This is an important factor. We can see that gradually, Option Two, as we've indicated, as you replace capital transfers with debt servicing, the debt does go up, and then continues to fall. Under the Option One, there's a steady reduction in debt. We do have in 2016, an opportunity to replace, that's the year that there was a significant, 2006 was the year that we had a significant debt issue. We can replace it in that year, and then obviously, Option Three continues to fall. So flipping to the, this chart kind of tries to provide a summary. We provided the information, we can see under Option Two, that's the more significant over 10 years capital reinvestment. Option Three gives you a smaller amount. Over the remaining life of this council, meaning 12, 13, and 14, we can see that Option Two does accelerate the payment. It's really front-end loads the reinvestment in the capital compared to the other two, although Option One does leverage some of it. Both Option One and Option Two take advantage of low interest rates. We may be even able to leverage more than what we projected, but again, we won't know that until we go over to the markets. Can you go back, please? You can see that, you can see that the estimated capital needs over the remainder of the council, when you look at year-over-year-over-year, is the same for all three, it's about $94 million if you round down. You can see that the investments that we're talking about, made as a percentage under each option, still remains less than 100%. Again, the impact of the utility rates and the tax rate continues to be none under those options. That doesn't mean that taxes and the utility rates won't be impacted by other inflationary costs, but under these three options, you basically would be able to have no impact. The outstanding debt at the end of the year, in 2014, which is after three years, again, Option Three is lower, Option One is middle, and Option Two is 78. Right now, the debt at the end of 2011 was just under $75 million. So you can see under Option Two, the outstanding debt at the end of 14 would be slightly higher. And then at the end of 10 years, which is 2022, you can see that all three are going down. So again, when you go to the next chart, you can see what we're requiring of council tonight. As I've said a couple of times, May 29th, we'll be providing the capital budget. What we're looking for is some sort of direction, if you want us to consider either Option One or Option Two. If you want us to consider Option Three, there'd be no increase in spending on capital items this year. So if you're suggesting Capital One, or Option One or Option Two, we would formulate our funding models on that. We have completed all the budget sheets, except for the funding side, and obviously, senior staff will have to bring that back on the 29th. Again, what we would like to be able to do, because most of the hard work on the 10-year forecast, and a lot of the budgeting has already been done, has come back earlier in the year in 2013, with kind of an early look at what the 2013 capital budget would be. So right now, that's, I'll turn it over for any questions or anything that you may have.
Yeah, I'll open with Councilor Ayenoni, please, and Councilor Maves.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is just to you and to the council. Sorry, Mr. Chair. I have never been so frustrated by a budget process than I have been at this one. Maybe I'm a linear thinker, but I really like to see my operational budget, my capital budget, and then a presentation by staff. Now, I called Thursday, said I got my council package, we have a capital budget presentation, where's my capital budget binder? And I was told I'm not getting that until later, and this is how it's going to be done tonight. Now, I'm not dense, and I do see the package that they gave before us, and Mr. Todd says what this chart is trying to do, but I'm thinking, you know, we got this at 4:30 tonight. It was not in our information for council. It really could have come on Friday, when it was emailed, when our information for council was emailed out. I am not a chartered accountant, I know Mr. Harrison can look at numbers, and so can you, Mr. Chair, and see them and figure them out. But every year, I sit with our head of finance, I go through the capital budget binder. When I hung up from him Thursday, I went back and I pulled my 2011 binder, which I save, I know there's nothing wrong with that, but I save them all. It is not hard to pull out your 2011 binder and project what we would need for 2012. We discarded things in 2011 to pass that Capital Works budget, figuring they'd be in the 2012. I don't know about anybody else, but this process is not working for me. I mean, I'm talking to my fellow councillors when I sit here, I know Councilor Morocco's going in to speak to senior staff on Friday about it, I've asked if I could go. This isn't working for me. We're almost in June, we're getting a capital budget binder in June that we're going to pass for 2012, and 2013's in October, I hope we get that budget binder first. You talked last year about us having a zero-based budget. This is not what I envisioned when I supported your motion then. I quite frankly thought we'd be given information to understand where we're going. We are, I just think it's really backwards. I'm not voting on anything up here. I don't know how we can do it without seeing our capital budget binder. I don't know how we can do it getting this at 4:30. I mean, that was a great presentation, but I need to compare it. This isn't working for me. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm just saying, understanding this, seeing our requirements, it's easy to put that up there. I think it's very hard for people at home to understand it. It's even harder for those of us who have always done it the other way. And I tried to support your way of the zero-based budgeting, I even read up on it, so I would understand it. This isn't how it is. So really, I'm not really sure what it is we're doing, I'm just saying, and so the residents understand, normally, we can understand this, and we have a binder in front of us, and we can make those informed decisions. This is really backwards, and I'm hoping we defer any decision till after we've seen a capital budget binder.
Okay. I just wanted to address the issue of zero-based budgeting. I've raised it with Mr. Harrison a couple of times. To be quite honest, Counselor, it's not what I expected either. I hope it can change for next year.
But we change it. That's what we're supposed to be here for.
And I don't. I mean, I get the information from staff, or I just present the information from staff as it comes along. In terms of the timing of it coming forward, I'll let Mr. Harrison speak to that. I know I spoke to him today about the issue of this report coming out so late. The other thing that we've got to keep in mind, I mean, you know, if we do motion to defer, that'll be our fourth deferral on a budget motion. So I mean, we sit here and we criticize staff, because it's May and we're bringing a budget forward, but this will be the fourth deferral of council for budget.
To that point, Mr. Chair, I'm not criticizing staff. I'm saying we set the direction. We make motions in this council, we expect it to come a certain way. I want them to understand, you're asking the decision-makers to make decisions on things they're not understanding. I'm not understanding this process. I've been here 13 years, I sit with our finance guy every year, I try to make sure I vote budget-wise informed. I mean, it's been a job, I go item by item. I like to know when I'm making my vote that I'm doing it informed. I am very confused over this process. And maybe I'm not, I hope I'm not the only one, but I'm finding the way we're doing it now very, very confusing for someone who needs to be a vote on this process. And I'm hope staff, and I was very clear Thursday, I don't understand this process. I know you've said you've spoke to them a couple of times, too. These are important decisions we're making, I'm glad they understand them, but we have to make the decisions, and this format, I find very difficult. And I find it very difficult to think that I would choose a requirement without a budget binder. Maybe it's just the way I think.
Perhaps I'll let he can talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll take responsibility for the approach, because it is different thinking. And what we're trying to do tonight, and what we were trying to do the last couple meetings, is to not get you right yet focused on project by project in your binder. We're trying to get you focused, at this point, to say, we need a strategy to let us know how many dollars we have to work with today, and how many dollars we're going to have to work with over the next 10 years, and that's what this is saying. So what we're trying to get council to think about is, let's look at a strategy where we can identify right now what we're going to be spending 10 years out in terms of our capital infrastructure, and that will give our staff a better opportunity to do longer-term planning, and to set projects out perhaps under multiple years, where we haven't really had the opportunity to do that before. We're always catching up, we're always behind the eight ball, and tonight, what you'll see is what Mr. Harrison is telling you, is that we have an infrastructure deficit. So right now, you've already approved a little over $16 million for us to spend on capital items now. You've already approved that in your operating budget, your sewer and water utility budget. So that's been approved. You've also already approved half of your capital budget this year, which you passed back in December? December, where you approved half of your capital budget, where Mr. Holman and the Treasurer presented a series of projects that are already underway for this year. And we've got a number of those projects already underway and near completed for this year. So what we are trying to focus on this year, if you look at the strategy, is to try to get you focused in on, can we get a longer-term spending plan here? And quite truthfully, I think any of the options will work. We prefer the options that will give us a greater amount of money, but I think what we need as a municipality is some longer-term direction to be able to say, over the next, even for this term of council, up until the end of 2014, how much are we going to be able to spend on capital items? We can do some better planning that way. We can do multiple-year planning in terms of going out and doing land acquisitions, engineering designs, environmental assessments, and doing all of that in advance without having to do it all in one year, because we're only right now, in previous years, approving a capital budget based on one year. Doesn't give us that ability to long-term plan. And if you look at the chart, and Dean, if you could go back to that summary chart near the end, what we're really saying here is, we're putting this proposal forward, and regardless of what the options are, if you could look at our, if you stay here a second, what the 10-year plan will tell you is, instead of our current track, which we're on, and our current track would say, over the next 10 years, we'd be spending about $160 million. These options tell us that even with the lowest option, which is Option Three, we're going to reinvest an additional $40 million, and the top option is up to an additional $60 million, without it costing us any more than it's costing us today. We will not be going back to the taxpayer and asking for one nickel more in terms of capital investment under this strategy. And we think that's sound financial planning for the longer term. Again, we could accept any of these options, but again, the status quo right now where we're at will put us about $40 million short of what we're saying we can deliver to you under this debt management plan. And Dean, if you go to the last chart, which summarized it, it is different, the whole series of ones, it was a chart, yes, this one here. And what we can see is that this plan does a couple things. It gives you about $40 to $60 million in reinvestment over this 10-year plan. We're saying it has no tax or utility impact, and by the end of the plan, it's going to significantly reduce your outstanding debt. Tonight, we're not trying to be here talking about whether we're going to pave, you know, a certain road or build a certain bridge. We're just trying to get council to think about the bigger picture, and let's try to get an idea of how much spending or what option we might like to choose. We'll then come back to you at the 29th meeting and say, okay, you gave us $16 million this year, here are your projects. You might be saying, we like Option One, and we're going to give you an additional $3 million this year, or, under Option Two. Under Option Two, we get an additional $3 million. So we might be back saying, it's not $16 million, we're going to be putting $19 million in front of you. So, you know, I know it's different, I guess we're challenging you a bit in terms of some different thinking, but our feeling is, I think it's a time that we need a little bit of different thinking in terms of looking longer-term to where we're going to go in terms of our capital. We all know around the table that our capital infrastructure spending is not at the level that it needs to be. And Todd has already shown us what that deficit is, every municipality's facing it, and we just think this is a sound strategy to put us back on track. And I do apologize, it is different thinking, we're not trying to, I guess we're just trying to get you out of your comfort level a bit, to try to get you thinking more long-term. And we promise that under this, if we can approve this kind of strategy, we will be back- we will be back to you in October or November with the 2013 capital plan because we want to get out ahead of it. And if you can see your way to, and, and if, if council feels uncomfortable approving this tonight, Mr. Chair, we can certainly come back and have this discussion again on the 29th. But this just sets the amounts of money. And once we know tonight the amount of money that we're, are committed. And if you look at the top line, that'll put it in perspective. Under option one, and option, I'm sorry, let me go to option three first. Under option three, that's basically what you've approved already for us. So we don't need any commitment tonight. We'll come back with a $16 million spending on our capital, half of which you've already approved. And we're already out there, Jeff's already out there building it and what other projects we've got going. If you approve option one, that means you're going to give us an additional $600, $700,000 in spending for this year. If you approve option two, we're going to get about $3 million more in spending this year. And it's all based on that capital, on the reissuance of debt financing. So that's what we back with you on the, on the 29th. And it all depends on where the discussion goes tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Todd, would you also be able to address zero base budgeting? I know councillor Ianone feels the same as I do, as well as other people around the table. Would like to see a zero base budget come in. We had asked for it for this year. We understand, you know, we had some, yes, some staffing health issues that, you know, might have held that back.
Well, you had the closest thing, in all honesty, that we could deliver you this year in zero base budgeting because we quite simply don't have the financial information in our financial systems to be able to deliver exactly what you're asking for. And those financial systems, in a truly, zero, let me just give you a small example, Mr. Chair. In a truly zero base budget, we should be able to tell you what it costs us to cut that park across the street, and what that is, and should we, how many times a year should we cut it? We don't have that level of detail. We just simply don't have that level of detail. We explained that in order to get these systems in place, we're currently working through each department to, to deliver this. It takes a lot of work on information systems part, a lot of information through finance. And quite truthfully, we're a couple of years off of being able to deliver a truly, truly zero base budget. We delivered this year what we, what we could get as what was the best approach based on the information we had. And that allowed us to go through accounts, scrutinize accounts. But it, it really wasn't the detail that we needed to truly deliver a zero base budget to you.
Will we have it for next year?
You will not have it in, in the, the idea that you're looking for for next year, simply because we don't have that level of financial detail in all of the areas.
We have more detail.
Mr. Chair, if I can say, I, I think, and this is what I think we're going to be talking to councillor Ianone and councillor Morocco about on Friday, and councillor Gates and whoever else would like to come to the meeting, would be happy to have you.
To that point, if you have to have that many councillors coming to sit and talk to you, there is a problem here, Mr. Todd.
Well, I, I, I would argue back to the fact, however, I truly think we, we presented a reasonable budget. We had a very reasonable tax increase this year. We've controlled spending over the last three years. Probably lower spending increases than any, any other municipality in the region. So we think we've done a very responsible job. In the lack of the information we truly believe we need to deliver to you, I'll be blunt with you tonight. I think the process in which we handle the budget is not working. We can't spend an hour here on a Tuesday night and expect to get into the level of detail that you as councillors truly want to get into. And we had this discussion at breakfast this morning with our friends next door in St. Catharines on a whole other issue, but we got talking about budget. The process St. Catharines uses, they have a budget committee. That budget committee meets once a week for about three months straight. And when they get to the budget committee at council, that meeting lasts three hours, and it's done. Because they've done all the nitty-gritty, detailed, looking at line-by-line work in committee. You can't do it here on a Tuesday night and expect to spend an hour here. You know, we, we present presentations, and I have to say, I, I think this was a great presentation tonight in terms of numbers. But in order to get into the detail behind these numbers, it would take us three or four hours to sit down and explain it to you.
And we can't keep deferring presentations either.
Yes, and we just, it's just not the right format. And I don't mean to, I, I just think we really have to sit down and really rethink how we're going to roll out the process. And we're open to any ideas you have. We understand that you're frustrated. We're equally frustrated because we just don't think we have enough time to fully inform you in this kind of a format here on a Tuesday night for an hour or so.
And the problem is, a lot of times, our agendas are very full, and we're trying to fit in a presentation. And in the past, we've just deferred those presentations to future meetings.
Absolutely.
And that's how we end up getting behind the eight ball.
It's not fair to you as councillors, it's not fair to staff. You know, we have a heavy night, and we're, we're getting into the, the budget discussion at, at 10 o'clock at night. You know, it's, it's, we just have to come up with a better way of doing it.
Yeah, councillor Ianone, you still to the floor.
Thank you. And, Mr. Todd, I don't know if anybody here has ever said to you, no, they will not come back for just another budget meeting, but I have been very clear in this council chamber that you pay me, I am paid, I will come here anytime you ask us to. And quite frankly, have said numerous times, I don't believe we should be doing planning, deputations, or any of those things on a budget night. You want to bring us back on a, for a four-hour meeting strictly on budget? I'm happy to be here, I'm paid to be here. If you think a budget committee is a way to go, you could have floated that by us. You came from St. Catharines. If you have better ideas for us to do it better, I'd like to hear them. That wouldn't faze, I think we had a budget committee. When I first came in, Pat Cum, when, yeah, when I was appointed after Pat Cummins passed away, there was a budget committee. Pardon me? A finance committee. But i- if that's the way you'd like to see it as CEO, CEO, tell us. But I am not opposed to coming back here and just doing a budget meeting. I've often sat here thinking, why are we listening to 10 deputations when it shows me that we're not going to get to our budget meeting to 10 o'clock? And quite frankly, I am not fresh enough, having been up since 6 o'clock in the morning at 10 o'clock, to start with those number charts. And I think we've said that around here. You want us here, call a meeting, we're paid to be here. And I, we, I, I will first say, I will come anytime you want to do just a budget meeting.
Yeah, the last one started after 11 o'clock.
Yeah. And like, a lot of these things, they can be fixed. If you don't like the way we're doing it, make a recommendation to us. But I'm telling you as a councillor, and I'm listening to the comments come around me while you're speaking, this isn't working for a number of us.
Okay, I have a bunch of speakers. I have councillor Mays, councillor Wayne, councillor Kerrio, councillor Morocco, councillor Thompson. Councillor Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, through you to, to, to Mr. Harrison. Uh, Mr. Harrison, just wondering, under options one and two, it says replace retired debt with new debt on both of those. Uh, can you give me some examples, like, we're retiring some debt from money we borrowed, what, 10 years ago?
Yeah, exactly. It's a cycle. The majority of the debt that we have are 10-year terms. So as the 10, as in the 10th year, you're just recycling it.
What, roughly, what were the interest rates then on the old debt? How much are we paying on those?
I don't know, 6% or 7%, 2001, I mean, 6%, 7%, 8%. They were, they were much higher than it is now.
So we're borrowing now, what, 5%?
Well, no, we're borrowing, last year's borrowing was under 4%. We, in the model, we were very conservative with our estimates with 4%. As I said in my presentation, I looked on infrastructure in Ontario, which is the, is the vehicle that we borrowed for both the Gale Centre and for the pumping stations. And the 10-year rate is anywhere from 2.81 to 2.91. So it's significantly less. So again, most municipalities are going out right now borrowing money because it's the wor, it's the cheapest it's been in a long time, and that's what they're doing.
Well, I think that's my point, is, is the fact that if we're going to do something, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, and you don't know what the rates are going to do, but every time I watch the stock market on television, they keep saying that eventually they are going to bump up the rates. We can do something now while the money is cheapest. I think that's the, that's the best option for us. I have no problem borrowing money if it's at a real cheap interest rate. I think that's a great business principle. And, and really, uh, in your opinion, I mean, you're handling the money for the city. What would you, if you were in my shoes or a councillor's shoes, which option would you choose?
Well, for this year, I would recommend going with option two for this year, simply because of the low interest rates. I would suggest that at, after that, we would relook at it. The option three is, is a good plan as well, in the sense, if you're concerned about the outstanding debt. But right now, I think you can, you have to jump on the, you have to jump ahead and utilize the low interest rates. What, what, what we're not talking about here is the need that we have. And I mean, I, I, I can sit here and, and I can show you a chart that says we need $99 million based on a financial model. I can stand here, and I can, I can, I can stand up for all of the directors as they tell me that they need more capital money, whether it's fixing roads, fixing sidewalks, fixing, uh, buying new fleet, replacing old vehicles, whatever it can be. This is an opportunity to fix some of those problems. Again, we'd restart the whole process again next year. And if the interest rates went up significantly, we could relook at it. But for this year, my recommendation is take the, the borrowing room that's in, available under option two, and go forward with it.
So with option two, we could probably get some of those infrastructure things done that we, that we desperately need to be doing?
That would be my recommendation.
Possibly, Mr. Holman can, can say, would he be able to have more money to get some things done at a very low interest rate?
Everybody, as you saw by that chart, the, the preliminary chart on the 10-year capital, I mean, the bulk of the, the bulk of the work is in the municipal, municipal works area. And we would be able to get, get some of that caught up. Again, if you're, if we're spending $16.2 million and what we're requesting is $34 million, that's a, that's a deficit. That's an infrastructure deficit that we need to replace.
But you'd be able to do a lot more with $20 million than the 16, obviously, in the coming year.
Certainly, the $20 million that we were suggesting there. Again, when you get to capital budget, it's going to be higher than that, simply because we're going to have the VTS in there, which is using other people's money, the federal government and the provincial government money, to develop that whole system as well.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, make a suggestion, if it, if it makes council feel a little bit more comfortable. What we could do for the 29th meeting, where we'll deal with the details on the capital budget, we could bring forward, if you look at that top line, where are we, what we're talking about for this year? Do we want to spend what you've already approved, which is option three, 6, 16.2 million? Or option one, which is 16.9, or option two, which is 20 million? We could come back on the 29th and show you what we can spend this year on 16. If you approve option one, we're going to give you a couple.
What you can do with that money?
Yes. Yes, what we could do. And then we could come back with the projects that we could do, additional projects under option two. It would just give you an idea that really you're going to leverage that, that debt servicing money that's coming due or, or available, and leveraging it back into additional projects for this year.
No, I have no problem borrowing more money as long as the interest rate remains low. I think that's good business policy. Thank you.
Perhaps that's something that we could ask the Treasurer to do, if that would help you out of having to make the decision tonight, but.
Okay, councillor Wing, please.
Well, I think the last bit of discussion helps me a lot because I'm really on the horns of a dilemma here. On one hand, I know I've been going on for years about the infrastructure deficit. So I'm really happy when we're all talking about the fact that our capital infrastructure spending is not what it needs to be. Because I know I've belated that a lot in the past. On the other hand, I am very debt averse. And right away, option three is what appeals to me because I would rather put money into the ground, into something that's ours, than send it to the bank. To me, that is the best bank for your buck. But I can appreciate the opportunity we have with interest rates being as low as they are. When I was looking at this as, okay, here is, you know, we're picking option one, two, or three for the next 10 years, there, I didn't want any part of that. I re, you know, I remember how quickly rates can change. I remember stagnation. I remember about 20 years ago when rates were up in the teens, and, you know, that's just too risky for me. But I can consider going with option two for this year only. I would have a lot more comfort if the extra money were going to municipal works projects. So if that was earmarked specifically for those, the roads, the sewers, the water lines, those sort of things, the real basic core infrastructure. I think that would give me a lot more of a comfort level. I'm still really leery about anything other than option three because I really think we need to be building our assets and rebuilding the assets rather than giving any more we have to to a bank. But if it's for one year, and then look at it again the next year, I might be able to support option two. But I really think, like councillor Ianone, I'd want to see what's, what we've got so far for what we've approved, and what we could have if we did go with option two. So I think I want to see the traditional capital works budget that we're accustomed to before I make a decision.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Kerrio, please.
Thank you, Yourship. I think that what the staff is asking is not unreasonable. I think everyone wants to know what they have to spend over more than one year. I also think that what they spend it on may change if they know what they have for the next 10 years. They may come up with a different idea on how to spend it, where to spend it, if they know what they're going to get. As opposed to coming back with every year, hat in hand, and us trying to cut every year on what they get to spend. So I guess it boils down to, you know, do you want more money now? And have a bigger debt at the end of 10 years? Or do you want what some may consider a reasonable money now, and they at the, at the end of 10 years have much less debt? That's all it is. It's a lot simpler than we're trying to make it out to be. I think the question we just asked Mr. Todd is, or Mr. Harrison is, just give us the pros and cons on all three, and it'll boil down to being very simple. More money now, more debt later, a little bit less money now, less debt later. That's it. My question is, why didn't we have this on Thursday? Why could we not have had this in our package on Thursday? Why do we get this on Friday before we're expected to discuss it?
I'll have to take responsibility for that because I'm responsible for collecting all the data from all the departments. I didn't get all the information that I needed to put this presentation together, so it's my responsibility. Moving forward, the deadlines that we establish will be met, and we'll get this out to you in the packages. Again, it's, it's, ultimately, I'm responsible for the financial records of the corporation. And again, this won't happen again.
Okay, thank you. It would just would have been easier if we'd had it.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I fully understand that. And I guess I'll have, like I, like I said, well, I'll take responsibility for not collecting the information. It's my responsibility to get the data. And again, what we, what we had was a situation where we didn't have all the full information when the package went out on Thursday. We held on to it. Again, generally, I'll just leave it like that.
Did you want to mention this?
Well, I, I think, and to councillor Kerrio, I think this chart summarized what you were asking.
Exactly.
You get, under option, option three gives you less overall money over the 10 years. Option two gives you the most. Um, if you look at the, the, if you're interested, and councillor Wing talked about debt, all of the options have some debt at the end, but you can look at outstanding debt at the end of 10 years. Now, you've got to remember, our debt currently is about 70, 70.
Well, at the end of 2011, it was just under $75 million.
So 75 million. So under all three options, our debt at the end of 10 years is going to be less than what it is, in some cases significantly less than what it is. But under these, under this plan, you've reinvested between $40 and $60 million more into infrastructure than you're currently doing today. So under any of the options, your debt, so that's a win. Uh, under any of the options, you're spending more, that's a win. It doesn't cost the taxpayer anymore under any of the options, that's a win. I would say to you, the status quo is the only one that, to me, is, is a loser.
So then if I still have the floor, then can you just explain, in option one, you have, over 10 years, you have $212 million you're going to spend. After 10 years, you still owe $51 million. Option three, you're going to spend $201, and at the end of 10 years, you owe 35. Where's your, where's the, well, how's the difference? Where's that money go?
Basically, the timing of it.
Timing of interest rates, or what?
Uh, well, it's, it's the timing of it because you're, you're leveraging at the end of, in option three, you're in, in 10 years' time, you're getting the full bang for the dollar for dollar. So you're catching up. If you look at those charts previously, that's, that's, you know, the difference between.
It's interesting if he goes back actually.
But it is, it is interesting.
Let him go back for a second.
Yeah.
Because when you're in year 2022, you can see how clearly option three really outweighs option one and option two. Especially in terms of spending. So on a go-forward basis from 2022 on, you're continually spending more in infrastructure than you would under option one and two. So really, I mean, it comes down to me in terms of how we want to leave the city's finances in 10 years. Not, not today, but in 10. Not, not today, but in 10 years' time.
Well, the counter argument to that, and you did ask me my professional opinion on that, and I'll give it, in that sense that you have no, no knowledge of what the decision-makers are going to make in 2022. We are faced with fiscal challenges. We talked about this in the operating budget. We have challenges on our revenue side. And again, what option one and option two provide you with are basically no impact on the taxes or utility rates, but provides more money to fix the needs today. Option three provides you relatively the same money, 5% difference in 10 years, and lower debt. But the problem with that model is it doesn't deal, it doesn't deal as effectively as the other two with the current needs. That's what they.
There's a lot less debt if they have the same years.
Well, it's a lot less debt, but then your operating budgets, again, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to know. I can't predict what operating savings we are going to eliminate by fixing and replacing things earlier than in the few, than, than later. That's really what the, the item is.
If I could just follow up, and, and again, we, we like, we'll take any of these three options. And again, it's, it's your preference. It's your appetite for, options one and two are front-end loaded, and, and option three is sort of back-end loaded, so, but they're, they're all good options. What we're trying to do here, too, and I don't think we've mentioned it yet tonight, is we want to get some stability, some longer-term stability in our capital spending. Because we're truly believing that our problems, if we can get this put to bed and, and have some stability here, our problems in, in the future years are going to be on the operating side. We've got extreme operating pressures that we know we're going to get. You know, we've had a couple of requests already from other departments on terms of increase, and we've got to, in future years, focus, I think, more on just how we're going to operate, how are we doing business, how are we running the business, and not worrying about, you know, what's in the ground, and what our vehicles are like, and, and, you know, what, what infrastructure we have. And that, that kind of takes the pressure off us and kind of say, okay, we've got that, we've got that well looked after. You know, either of these options could give us, you know, 40, 60 million dollars over the next 10 years in more spending. Let's focus on the operating side, and I think that's what the councils are saying. We've got to get in more of the meat and potatoes of the, of the zero-based budgeting on the operating side, and we won't have to worry as much. My biggest fear is that we, if we don't get built into a strategy, it's always too tempting to cut back on the capital to balance our operating budget, and, and we can't continue to do that. We have to keep reinvesting in our capital, and we have to make the tough decisions in the future on the operating side. And, you know, we're hoping that this strategy gets us part, partway there anyway.
Okay. Councilor Morocco, Councilor Thompson, Mayor Diodati.
Thank you, the Chair. I appreciate that, and I did call Mr. Todd earlier. We had a conversation, said that, you know what, I'm just not happy with the way it is, and I think I can echo exactly what Councilor Iannone said, and Councilor Carrio, too, as well. But we do need to look at it, and I'm glad, Ken, that you did say also, in our conversation, you really weren't happy with the way it was being presented either. I think that we just really are looking for more detail, more explanation, and I'm also curious to see if, if any of the capital budget is actually being flowed over to offset some of the costs needed in the operations and whatever. So there's some areas there. I think that we've talked about a finance committee also, that might be something that we should look at, considering for future, to have a finance committee put together to sit with staff or have some kind of more input so that we maybe have more direction or understanding so that we can actually be able to move this quicker. And there's no doubt, I think there was a month or two, I stood up and said, you know what, I don't know why, and I know that Councilor Thompson said this, too, we should be passing this far before December, November, actually, that this should be done. Here we are, one half of a year through a term or a year, and we're holding production up from the city. And I know you need that, half a year. We need the money to continue on, and I think that it's a good option for two, to consider that one, but I'm like Councilor Iannone, I just need to see, I need the binder, and to get this today was just another way, like, of proving that this presentation of budgeting for us as a council is just not working. So, and I'd like to take another step further, and I'm glad to meet with, with Ken and Todd, too, and I think Councilor Carrio was also interested, too, on coming Friday. But I think that you pretty well addressed a lot of the concerns tonight, and I appreciate that, but I still look forward to sitting in. But I think that, you know, we were challenged, or I was challenged, I think, in an article in Bulimia by one of the writers, is saying, you know what, here they go again, saying that they're going to make all these cuts, and they're going to focus on, you know, the, the infrastructure and capital. And at the same time, we're going to still put up our hand and give money to all the different charities and organizations. Well, you know what, the elephant's in the room, that's what we have to address. I think that we should actually, as a council, go on record stating right now, as far as it goes, no one's going to get any more money. Consider as of today that, you know what, until we go through the budget, we're not going to make a commitment that we're going to every year give you money. That's a tough call, and I think we actually, even at the last council meeting, said that for project share, that we were actually going to look at the province and see how they can be funded, and it wasn't fair that the region cut funding from them, and then it comes back to us. So, and I'll say, if you don't have money in your own house and you can't donate, then you're not going to. And I sure as heck don't want to be looking at borrowing money to give to organizations when we can't afford to fix our own sewers and what our mandate here is, infrastructure.
Okay. Councilor Thompson, Mayor Diodati, please.
Well, we're, we're all over the place today. Anyway, I think what we're attempting to do here is totally separate from the actual capital budget for this year. What we're trying to do is get a financial plan, a strategy, not for only this year, which I appreciate the comments and the question from Councilor Wing, that we can do it for one year and then readdress it, and also change where we're going with respect to that. But two people on either side of me are constantly talking about capital works and infrastructure, and you'd automatically think, looking at that chart, hey, let's jump in, the interest rates are low, option two looks great, let's get in there and spend another $4 million this year on, on infrastructure, providing its roads and sewers where we really need it. So I personally think that the two issues are separate. We'll bring the, on the 29th, bring in the capital budget. If we pick option two, which I favor now because it spends $4 million on capital works, is going to change the budget anyway. So I think that this just lays out a plan. It's, although it's a 10-year strategy, which we've never had before, and I compliment the staff for coming in with something that is, is progressive and gives us the opportunity to see for, for the next 10 years, which isn't going to adversely affect the mill rate, the tax increase. And I think that this is, option two is my preference, and I think that's going to help us with our infrastructure and spending and capital works. And after that, we can deal with the, the capital budget on the 29th, so I have no problem with supporting option two. And if I'm wrong, I'd like to hear what Mr. Harrison has to say.
If you're right, do I have to say? No, if you're right, do I have to say? No, I mean, certainly, I agree with the sentiments of Councilor Thompson in the sense that this is intended to be just a plan to give us some direction in the long term. And all, all that tonight's going to do is just to help us put together which projects are going to be included in the capital budget, whether you're going to give us, whether we're going to spend an additional $624,000 under option one, or an extra $3.9 million under option two. That's really what this is intended to be and to lay the groundwork for the future.
So is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Diodati and Councilor Mays, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of great comments around the table, and, you know, and something Councilor Carrio said to me several years ago, it always stuck in my head, is he said, now with the interest rates being the way they are, you're going to get the best lift that you've ever got. And I remember him saying that, and he's absolutely right. And, you know, it wasn't, well, it was long ago, but I remember at one time when the interest rates were in the 20s, you know, and, and now if we're getting money for, for 4%, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to take advantage of this because it's not always going to be this way. So my first question to our finance person at the city, our resident expert, is if we borrow money today at around about 3%, or 4%, is it locked in? The money we borrowed today, is it locked in or will it fluctuate? That's my first question, Mr. Chair.
It's locked in.
It's locked in. Okay, thank you. Next question is, or comment. I noticed on the capital needs chart that even at option two, as aggressive as it is, we still won't achieve where, you know, I guess, and I know this is a bit of a wish list possibly for the 10-year capital plan, but it won't hit that, right? Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
We haven't seen the 10-year capital needs.
Pardon me?
We've seen only numbers. We haven't seen.
Right, specific products. I understand that. And the next question, and I know a few people have asked this, if we support option two tonight, going forward, does that commit this council in the future?
Well, certainly, what we're looking for is a direction, and that's why we did the work to put out the two different options, and then the work we did to deal with option three. So we would be looking like that as a broad guideline, but as I started with the beginning of my presentation, is economic conditions change, the markets can change, interest rates could change, there's a variety of factors that could change, so there is flexibility that would be built into it. I think the original question was, what would I, what would I suggest? I would say that option two, the amount of money that we're asking for in option two for this year, for 2012, would be the option, and then we'd regroup and look and see on a long-term basis what, what option we would, we would look at. So there is flexibility built into it.
Okay, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So just to re-ask the question, are we locked in? I know, obviously, we're going to readjust, but if rates fluctuate, are we locked in?
No, no, you're not locked in.
Okay, thank you. So, so there's an exit strategy in case it happens. And I know a lot of people are scrambling to renew their mortgages now, because I know BMO had 2.99 at one point, and they jumped to three and a quarter, and people get a little panicky that they're going to go up again. So I think we definitely have an opportunity. I'd hate to be here next, I'd hate to be here next year and find out rates jumped again, and we missed a window, a window of opportunity.
Yeah, municipal rates, as I said, the locked-in rates, well, you borrow at it the time you get it, state remains as the rate.
Right, but I'm saying if we only borrowed, if we borrowed 4 million less, and, and we needed the money later to borrow it later at a much higher rate, it's going to cost us a lot more money.
Yes, and, and as I said earlier, there's permutations that you could use with other options. You could just set a set amount, you could do a variety of different things.
The last question is, now, I don't, and I know there's, when you're comparing the options one, two, and three, we had that one comparison of options chart, the only thing missing is 20, $22 values, right? Because a dollar today is not going to be worth a dollar in 10 years. So you haven't been able to extrapolate those numbers and use permutations and combinations and go up with the matrix?
I think, I believe in one of the, one of the previous presentations, we did have present value tables in it. Again, you know, one of the things that you look at in option three is you're spending more of today's dollars in option three than you are in option two, but a dollar spent today is worth more than it is in 10 years' time, simply because of inflation.
So we don't actually know that number, though, what the, no, we don't know that?
I don't, I don't have that.
Okay. Is there a way of getting, figuring those numbers out?
Certainly, it's just a matter of doing a present value of that, and we certainly could do that.
Okay. I thought I had asked at the last meeting, so that's what I was asking, I wasn't sure.
Well, yeah.
Exactly, exactly right.
We, we did provide that in one of the previous presentations. I didn't include it in this one.
Okay. Because I, I could, I could certainly support for this year going forward, option two for this year. I know it was mentioned by Councilor Thompson, Councilor Wing, and I'd be willing to do that, and then regroup for next year and come forward, because I agree, you need a plan. You have to have a 10-year plan. You can't every year start from, I don't know. You have to start with something, and I think it's important that we help get you guys on a plan. You've offered us three great options here, and, and I think it's important that we pick one so we can start plotting out where we're going and taking advantage of the interest rate.
Mr. Mayor, I think that the CAO indicated that we can, I mean, the work on the spending side has been done already for the capital budget sheets. It's just a matter of when we, when we, when as staff, we put forward what's going to be included, and what would be, as we called in the previous years, the addendum, we can identify what would be in, you know, under the 20, under option two, what, what projects would be included, and then we can consider that on the 29th.
To that point?
To that point?
To that point, I could have exactly supported it if I saw what they were spending it on. In my mind, I'm, I, I need to have that. So I don't have a problem with picking an option if you had attached the spending to the option. That's what I'm saying to you. I understand we need a plan by the year, 2011 plan had a five-year plan, gives us the next five years. It's not, it wasn't hard to hand that, that information to us tonight. That's what I need in order to support a motion here. It's simple.
Okay. Councilor Mays, Councilor Gates, please.
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing in support of option two. Just adding up the first five years, we'd have more than $28 million in extra dollars for capital expenditure, so I think that'd be really significant. So I, I would have to support option two as well, and there again, I continue to, to hope that the interest rate would stay low. But anyway, I, I think that certainly would give the staff more money to work with, and I'm looking forward to seeing where we're going to spend it, hopefully.
Okay. Councilor Gates?
Yeah, just to some of my fellow councillors' comments, I actually believe that the process should be looked at, revisited as, as we move forward, and to Councilor Iannone and Councilor Morocco, and maybe to a lesser extent, Councilor Carrio. They want to have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Todd to go over some of this stuff. You know, I understand it, I think some other people around the council table may understand it, but in fairness, they've requested that meeting, and I believe that that's what we should do. We should give them that opportunity and then come back in a couple of weeks. I may be wrong, but with the way the economy is going this week, I don't see interest rates going up in the next two weeks, so I think we're okay for the next couple of weeks. But give the other councillors that want to have that opportunity, want to get educated on this, and how important it is to the residents, to the city. We're asking them to make a decision based on something, maybe over a long period of time, in 10 years. I don't think asking for that opportunity for the fellow councillors to have that meeting is a bad idea. It's a good idea, and I think on a go-forward basis, we should take a look at the process and maybe even have meetings on Saturday when we get close to budget, and spend the day and, and do that kind of stuff. Obviously, I don't think we can get it all done in a council chamber in a couple hours. I think it's just a lot better way to do it and help the other councillors have an eye.
I think dedicated budget meetings would be a good idea, to be honest with you.
What's that?
I think dedicated budget meetings would be a good idea. This way, we don't have to fool around with other business. Oftentimes, like I said, we've been caught here late in the night, 10, 11 o'clock, and starting budget, and presentations have been deferred, which has put us off months. So, Councilor Carrio, please.
The other thing that would help me, Mr. Chairman, is comparing the options two and three, one, two and three, if it wouldn't be too much trouble for our engineering department to look back a little bit, to see today, if you could give us a comparison about what our dollar buys today. I don't know if you did it by, by mile of road, by feet in sewer, by feet in, in sidewalk, cup, what I mean? It would be nice to know today, compared to five years ago, six years ago, eight years ago, what your dollar buys you, because it would, if it hasn't changed a lot over the last five, six, or seven years, then I might have a different way of thinking than if it is creeping up fairly quickly. I may want to choose option two because I may want to spend $28 million more in the next four or five years as opposed to carrying it on in future years. Are you following what I'm asking? I may want to know that in order to say, I might want to give you $30 million more to fix infrastructure, knowing that we might get twice as much work done if we did it now as opposed to stretch it over 10 years. Mr. Chair?
Sure.
It's difficult to rely on historical expenditures because there's too many factors in play. You know, how much competition was there, were the contractors busy, was the price of oil at the time? You know, all those factors kind of go into play, so you can't really just kind of pro-rate, you know, what it cost to build a kilometer of road in, in 2005 versus what it is now. It gives you, I guess, a bit of an idea as to what might happen if there's a trend there, but I think you'll see that there were some spikes there during the infrastructure stimulus funding, the contractors' prices all went up.
But I think it would be nice to know, I know the contractors know today whether they're getting a lot more in unit prices for their work than they were five years
ago. I don't think it's hard to compare unit prices today, even if it's on the extras or whatever, just to give us a ballpark idea, because you should be pitching us and saying, if you give me $25 million more over the next five years, I'm gonna do a lot more work with that than I would if you give me that money seven, eight, nine years down the road, which different options show. Because obviously, there, some of them are front-end loaded to give you more money today, so you should be, I, I would think, pitching us, give me more money today, and I'm gonna get you more work done, I would think.
I, yeah, and I don't know that Mr. Holman actually is able to give you that information, even this year, I think when Mr. Holman looked at asphalt pricing, he expected to do.
I was talking about a trend over more than, you know, a short period, five, six, seven years, because we're talking about five, six, seven years.
We have, we have historical costs on what asphalt costs and various things, and concrete, we can certainly go back and get, get some, some sort of estimate.
If it's difficult for you to do.
No, it's not.
I can, no, but if it's real difficult, I can do it through the contractors.
Yeah.
Because I know if I just ask them, they'll tell me.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Morocco, Councilor Nainoni, Councilor Wing.
Chair, I just, I appreciate Councilor Gates willing to support the fact that we delayed, but I just wanna say, my initial meeting, or purpose to meet with Mr. Todd was basically to talk about how we can improve the future budgeting process. Obviously, it seems to be too complicated, it's too piecemealed, you've got the operation, you've got the capital, and before we used to get them all pretty much at the same time, and I do hear the echo of everyone around the council table saying that we would like to have it, one council meeting and a presentation, that would be good. So if we could actually work on that, that would be greatly appreciated. I'm not looking for a detailed meeting with the staff about this presentation right now, I'm looking about how we can improve it in the future, but I am very disheartened that I don't have a budget, and yet I'm actually asking to approve one or two. And I understand that two is the best option, as far as I'm concerned, and anyway, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Okay, Councilor Nainoni, Councilor Wing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When, when we reduced from Monday, when we went from Monday to Tuesdays, we reduced meetings, I was kind of worried that's what the clerk was gonna stand up and say, and it might have been. But when councillor, when we put that motion on the floor, we said, if you need us.
If you need.
Call another meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Everybody, we, those of us that supported it put up our hands, so we did not say we wouldn't come. So I think you're getting that just that we will do additional budget meetings. It's our jobs.
Call the meeting.
Yeah, it's, yes, that, that's it, it's our job, you have a job, we have a job. Call the meeting, we will be here. So, because I, I do understand we reduced them when we went from Mondays to Tuesdays, but it was with the option of coming back. And, and thanks, thank you to Councilor Gates for, for his comments. I will say, it's not that we don't understand the options up there, I get that, but it, and, and I've always stood here and said I would vote for more money for infrastructure, but show me where you're putting it. That's all I wanna know, it's like my deciding what I wanna spend at my house projected on what I'm gonna have. All I wanna know is, if I pick that, where is it going? Because I just said, it could be an overpass on Morrison, hopefully. It could be a road, it could be a road, it, it could be a construction, a sewer main, it could be anything, but we all know, when they give us our budget binders, what is a wish list and what is a need. I don't think, quite frankly, Mr. Holman ever has a wish list. Everything he ever hands us from 13 years ago to 13 years from now is always gonna be a municipal need when you see the deficit that we have. So it's never a wish list, it's the decision amongst this table on what we're gonna fund and what we're not. We have to take that responsibility as politicians. All I'm asking is, can I have that in front of me before I make a decision to borrow more money? That's it.
Okay, Councilor Wing.
Yes, something, actually a couple, things a couple people said. First of all, Councilor Morocco said something about, you know, we're borrowing and giving money to charities, and that's true, you know, we, when we do the operating budget, we fund certain charities in our city, and then we run out of money, and we end up borrowing to fund the capital needs for things we're, we really are responsible for. And Mr. Todd said something, and I sort of flipped it, and what we need to do is, and I've been saying this for a while, is we need to make the tough decisions on the operating side, and then we'll have more for capital. I remember, I guess maybe a few meetings back, several meetings back, I put a motion forward about having staff work with the social agencies we support, Project Share, Women's Place, Y W C A, to try and find a sustainable funding model for them that does not rely on City of Niagara Falls tax dollars, I'm just asking, where are we at with that, that effort? Because, you know, we really do need to see money coming from the province and the region. It's not our responsibility at this municipal level to fund social services that are needed in our community, it's the region's responsibility. I know they cut the funding to Project Share, why did they do that? How did they get away with that? It's their responsibility, not ours, and I would really like to see our staff be able to work with those agencies and find a sustainable funding model for them. I don't wanna see them lose all their funding, but it's not fair for us to keep funding them either.
Does anyone wanna address the councillors' concern? No? Okay. Councilor Morocco?
Chair, to that, to that point, I know it's not this budget, and I'm hearing that, it is an operational budget, but it is a budget, and I think that, I'm not sure if it's ever been done, but I'd be interested to see what other municipalities actually fund all the things that we do, or if we had a list of all the things that we fund, can we see what other municipalities fund those organizations? And if so, then okay, and if not, then, then we have to seriously take a look at. And there's organizations that are double and triple dipping, and everybody around the table knows this, we just went to another meeting where they were actually getting money from another source of our corporation, and we thought, well, wait a minute, not only single, double, triple, sometimes they were getting, so I think we need to look at that. And then, some of these organizations have a healthier reserve fund than we do. So in all fairness, I think we have to really look at organizations that are double dipping, and I know that everybody doesn't wanna talk about it, but I'm gonna put it on the table, and that's a challenge, like, we have to look at that. So I would really like to ask staff if they would provide us with a, a list of all the organizations that are receiving funding from us, and what other municipalities are. So I just wanna, wanna be fair, so I'd like to ask the support of my council if that's a motion, or if that's just something that staff would do for us, I greatly appreciate that.
Do you wanna address that, Karen? Do you need that by way of motion?
No, we're happy to do that, councillor. In fact, I think the last couple of budgets, we've had information here, and we've been suggesting we get out of the grant business, and they're tough decisions, and it's something we're gonna have to readdress again next budget, we can put that kind of information together for you.
And I'll say that Councilor Nainoni has spearheaded that for a long time, or she's gonna chop my head off.
Yeah, and staff has been consistent with what they've brought forward as well, and the recommendations, it's just that council hasn't listened to them. Councilor Wing?
Just to clarify, I was asking for an update, I'm pretty sure I remember putting that motion on the floor, and I'm pretty sure I remember it passing. So that's why I, I was just asking, you know, what has the progress been?
There are a lot of people that wanna respond now. Hang on.
We've, if, if I may, councillor, we've, each of the areas of, of the grants, now what are mostly fee-for-service, different departmental directors are responsible for those, so what our intention is to the treasurer is, we're gonna go back and have those conversations, not only with the groups, but we have to get out to the region, we have to get out to the province, talking to our members and stuff, we haven't done that, we were gonna, because this year's budget's been approved, we'll have that kind of stuff back for you with the next, next budget cycle. So we haven't done it as we speak today, because we've already approved this year's budget for that. Okay?
Okay, are there any other comments? Councilor Mays?
Mr. Chairman, if, if you're gonna consider moving forward with this, I'd be happy to move that we accept option two, which is replace retired debt and new debt, and reallocate capital transfer, do debt servicing.
Okay. I'm gonna second that motion. Okay. Is there any questions to the motion? Councilor Wing?
Is that just for one year or for the next 10 years? Because that's gonna make a difference for me in how I vote.
Again, through to Mr. Todd, Mr. Harrison, I'm sorry, do we have that option if we pass this? Obviously, we can shift gears next year, need be.
Certainly, yeah, certainly you have the option for flexibility after this year, if you were to go with option two's funding model for the 2012 capital budget, we certainly, when we bring it back, and all three budgets back, you can, you can look at it, at a change then.
And if there's a great interest rate or hike or something next year, we go to plan.
With the economic climate as it is out in the world, I don't anticipate that there would be huge increases in the long-term rates, but again, certainly if we, we, we start to see that creep upward, we'd be coming back to it.
So if, if need be to get this put through, then we'll make it for one year?
That's fine with me.
So move.
So the motion is for one year? Are there any other questions to the motion? Mr. Harrison, what would that bring the city, is that to somewhere around the 81 million mark?
No, it would be under $80 million for this year, simply because we're retiring, we'll be retiring debt, I have, I don't know, that's not the chart, but it'd be, the, the debt would be $75 million, we're paying off approximately $4, $4.5 million, I believe, we would be still remaining under, as you can see by the chart, well under $80 million. Okay?
Okay.
We can, I actually, I'll, I'll give you the, the direct number when we do the capital budget on the 29th.
Are there any other questions to the motion? If not, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm opposed as well. Was there, sorry, was there three opposed? Three. Okay.
Vic, can we redo that? Please, I think there's a little confusion around vote, please.
You wanna redo the vote?
Yeah, just, I think there's a little confusion around whether you're voting, huh? Let me just do it again.
The motion, the motion that's on the floor is to, the motion that's on the floor is to accept option two for 2012.
Go for six, one?
Six months, one year, whatever it may be. Everyone understands the motion?
Mr. Chair, just a question.
Would you like to have a reported vote?
No, are they gonna, are they gonna do this borrowing before May 29th?
No, no, the, the budget.
I, I understand, Carolyn.
Okay.
I mean, when I look at the capital needs, I haven't seen the capital needs yet, so I don't know how much money should be allocated.
Yeah, and that's all I'm asking.
I get it.
And I'm not voting to get, I'm not opposed to it, voting opposed to your position, I only wanna know where I'm spending it. I'm comfortable in my vote, I don't misunderstand anything.
Just to that point, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Even if we approve it tonight, is there any reason why councillors can't sit with staff to have that discussion around some of the projects?
Well, there isn't any reason why we have to approve it, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
You make the decision, right?
Mr. Chair, you're misunderstanding me. All I'm saying to you is, I, my own vote here, which I answer to, I'm not comfortable voting without the projects in front of me. If I'm gonna go sit with Mr. Todd on Friday, and I'm not being handed those addendums or the, that's a waste of my time, and I don't think I should have them before you have them. So, so if we're going to get that information, and we're, you have those addendums and that information, then we should all get them at the same time. I don't misunderstand anything other than I'm comfortable in my vote of no until I have all the information.
Can I, can I interject?
Sure, Mr. Harrison?
The, what I would suggest then, and we, we said this earlier, is that we would prepare the capital budget based upon option two, and that we would come back with the option two on May 29th, with the projects included, that include the additional spending that is outlined in option two. At that time, you could vote upon, just like every other year, you'll be able to pull projects in, exclude projects, because ultimately, the council is the decision-maker. All we were asking for today is to provide you, provide us with direction in the long term, and I think you've done that, but if it would behoove all of councils to have the actual book, you'll have that on the 29th.
Can I, I?
Go ahead.
As I said, I support option two, I'm just not happy, I don't have a binder that actually gives me an outlines where it's gonna be spent.
No, I get it.
I'd like to see that binder, I don't have a problem supporting it, so I'm just, you know, knowing that now that we can actually even see and make decisions on the 29th, we've spent more than half the money, I think, already, but I still wanna see a budget, binder.
And, 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 and,
The meeting we'd set up for Friday morning was to talk about changes or improvements to the budget process. It wasn't to look over capital.
Well, I think that's okay.
Okay. So the discussion is at nine o'clock on Friday morning. Anybody that wants to come, we're in committee room one at nine o'clock. And that's just gonna be talking and kicking around ideas for how we might improve the process for future years.
Right.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, I'll pass it back over.
Okay. Mayor's remarks. Drinking Water Week. This week is Drinking Water Week from the sixth to the twelfth, so make sure you get out your refillable bottles and enjoy Niagara's finest tap water. Also, there's, this is interesting. It's also, this week is Nurses Week. It's Nurses Week as well, so bring your containers to your nurses and give them to them this week to celebrate Nurses Week and Water Week. Drink, Drinking Water Week. Boxrun.ca. There's a link on the city's website. Click on it. Please, everybody listening, click on it. It is boxrun.ca. And this is a link to Mike Strange's run, bless you, along the Terry Fox run, the path that he took, one stride at a time. He's one quarter done this run. We're really happy for him, and, and it's nice to see someone that wants to support what he's doing and showing commitment. And councillor Peter Angelo just informed us tonight that he is flying out to Regina and he is going to run for one day. Is that right, councillor Peter Angelo? Did you want on this note, maybe just tell, tell us what you're, what you're up to for that day? I think that's great.
Sure, thanks, Your Worship. Friday night, I'm gonna fly out to Regina, and I had a chance to talk to Mike today. I appreciate him inviting me out there to run with him. I'm very, I'm very honored to do it. So I'm gonna fly out there on Friday night and, and I'm gonna run with him all day Saturday. I know he puts in about forty K a day. I'd like to stay longer. I, I, I just can't, I have to get back. Aside from that, Your Worship, I just wanted to, I wanted to congratulate Mike and, and, you know, talk about the fact that it's really a selfless act that he's performing. And I know everyone believes in the cause. There's many people around this table. I know councillor Thompson was, you know, one of the big supporters when Terry Fox first came on. Councillor Ainoni, you shaved your head with me a few years ago in, in support of Terry Fox. I remember being there for the first Terry Fox run, and I believe it was held at Queenston Heights down in Niagara Lake. But, Your Worship, I, you know, it's one of those things where cancer affects everyone. I have friends and family that have, you know, lost their battle, that are fighting their battle right now, just around these council chambers. I know I told councillor Ainoni tonight that I would mention the fact that, you know, herself, former councillor Kim Crater, former councillor Ed Mahalchukin, of course, former councillor Garrett Hendershot are some of the ones that, that I've had the pleasure of working with, Your Worship.
Pat Cummings.
It's, and Pat Cummings as well, thank you. It's, it's a great cause, Your Worship, and I'm happy to contribute. I, I hope to just bring a little shred of awareness to it, because I think it's a great thing that Mike's doing, and I hope that we can all support him more.
Great, well done. Councillor Cario.
Who do we, or the public, if we want to support Vic's participation, who do we make the checks payable to?
Well, how do you want to do that, councillor? Okay, so he's suggesting go to Mike Strange's website, which is boxrun.ca, B-O-X-R-U-N.ca. Or just go to the city's website, we have a link there. Yes, councillor?
Your Worship as well. I mean, I know, just in mentioning it around the table tonight, a lot of people said to me that they wanted to write a check to me on the spot. I'll be more than happy to take anything that people want to give me out to Mike, and I'm sure he's gonna appreciate everything that comes. So if people don't want to give before I go out, then again, it's boxrun.ca.
Okay. Yes, councillor?
And I suggest for those that want to follow it, like Mike Strange is on Facebook, like Mike Strange, because I have a following his run every day. He has gone through some terrible weather conditions and still continued. And, and he said how proud he is to continue on two legs, and he can't imagine having to do it on one. And he's just a tribute to this community, I will tell you. And he moved me to tears downstairs, and he does it up here. It, to me, to watch, it's really personal, and that money goes to such good work, and it needs to continue. So like him on Facebook, all the teen kids who are watching, like him on Facebook, that likes him to all their friends. You can get ten thousand likes in half an hour just by two friends, those old Faberge commercials, tell two friends, and they'll tell two friends. It just aged me, didn't it? So, I mean, go on, like his page, and you can follow his run. It really is spectacular when you think about it.
I didn't know that commercial. I remember my grandparents talking about it, but I don't remember. Just having some. Well, you know, and the other thing of interest is, Mike was saying it, sometimes it's discouraging for him, because he's by himself, he's out in some roads, out in the middle of nowhere. You know, people don't always donate. And even Terry Fox, in the beginning, it was very slow. He didn't have big crowds, he didn't have big money, it wasn't till the end. And it's very difficult. So the best thing we can do to support Mike, to support the run, is to, to click on the website, make a donation, even if it's small, and to like him on Facebook. Those kind of things go a long way and motivate him, and I know those little stories, and if you have a little story, those things really, really motivate him. Councillor?
And Mr. Chair, I chaired the Terry Fox run for about eight years. And, and, you know, some years, we'd have small, we'd have, we always set a benchmark on what we wanted to get. And quite frankly, every committee I sat on then was handed to me from the then-councillor Gary Hendershot. And he and I used to joke, and I know it's a sick joke, we used to joke, you'd think we did so much for cancer research, we'd have got a buy. And, and he and I laughed about that right till the last time I saw him. And it, it's remarkable that, I mean, I've had it ten years, and I'm still here, and I'm still healthy, and, and it's from cancer research, and it's from the treatments, and, I mean, people don't die of cancer. But you get people that live with cancer and manage cancer, and it's because of the two-dollar click or the five-dollar donation. If everybody watching went on and donated ten doll, even ten dollars today, it would be remarkable how much money Mike Strange's could make. And, and it goes to cancer, and there's nobody sitting at home watching us that can't put their hand out and touch someone they've loved or their friends that have it. So I really encourage, I mean, five dollars, it's, it's, it's almost nothing.
Absolutely. I heard councillor Cario give a hundred if councillor Peter Angelo wears a skirt when he's doing his run too, so I'm not sure. And stilettos. And shaved his head. And eyebrows. Yes, councillor?
Your Worship, just while we're on the topic, one idea that I had, and I don't know if it's possible, but, I mean, his route is actually on his website. We know where he's traveling to. There's all kinds of small municipalities that he passes along the way. It'd be nice if our Parks and Rec department could actually reach out to the different cities that he's going through, just to even drum up some support for him. I know, just again, in talking to him today, he finds it humbling, you know, when, when, when he gets young kids or, or anyone that comes out to, you know, cheer him on and, and support him. And I think that that can easily be done through email here. Even if there's running clubs in these municipalities that are Parks and Rec staff contact, that'll go out and run a leg with Mike. I think he would really appreciate it, so.
Did you want to send that as?
I don't know that I need to make that as a motion, Your Worship, but I think staff will just automatically do that, you know?
Okay, that's great.
It'd be a nice gesture and effort.
There's a lot of nodding, that's nice. Okay, thank you. Boxrun.ca. Just to remind, remind everybody. Maybe they can put that across the bottom of the screen, code, code, whereas out in the truck. Boxrun.ca. May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Everyone should know, if you go into any grassy areas, check yourself for ticks. If you find a tick, they say to keep it in a plastic bag and go see your doctor and have the tick and yourself checked out. And also, remember to wear some repellent, DEET. And I know anyone that likes to golf, sometimes, I know councillor Maves, you've encountered some ticks in the past?
I did, one last year.
One last year? Ticked you off?
Yeah, but it ticked me off.
We'll put councillor Maves in a bag. Okay. There are some nursing awards. Congratulations to Lillian Haskin for winning a nursing award for excellence, Celia Aiello winning a nursing leadership award, and Lindsay Smith for nursing endowment fund bursary. This week, as I mentioned, it's Nurses Week, and we thank our nurses, and especially our local nurses for doing so great here in Niagara Falls. Coming up is the Ride of Silence, which takes place on May the sixteenth at seven PM at the McBain Center. It's just a quiet ride of cyclists to recognize those that have been killed or injured while riding their bicycles. That's taking place again, May sixteenth at seven PM at McBain Center. Miss America is coming to Niagara Falls with Teddy Bears of Hope, and she will be speaking at Saint Mike's High School, councillor Peter Angelo's school, on Saturday, May the twenty sixth, from ten until four PM. If anybody would like to go to see her, it's ten dollars. Plus, they're also accepting teddy bears with two-dollar tunis, where you can attach a message and send them to Haiti. That event, again, will be Saturday, May the twenty sixth. If you'd like any other information, you can call the mayor's office and get that as well. And as I just mentioned about the teddy bear event, there's a teddy bear collection right here at City Hall the entire month of May in support of this event. And again, you can drop off a new or slightly-used teddy bear with a tuni and a message attached, and we'll be sending these directly to Haiti. The two dollars covers the container cost of getting them to Haiti. Spring Delicious will be taking place downtown, June the first to the third. There'll be live music, and you can go on the city of Niagara Falls website for a lot more information of all the exciting food, beer, and wine expo that'll be taking place downtown. Comic Con Niagara. For those of you that haven't been following this, it's actually quite exciting. It'll be taking place June the ninth at the Scotiabank Convention Center. It's a family-friendly event, and there'll be a lot of celebrities in attendance. This is a big event that takes place all over the world, and this event will be here in Niagara, and watch for it to grow in excitement and importance. They've already sold outstanding numbers of tickets. They've got people coming from all over North America. We've got Hollywood celebrities, WWE people, a lot of interesting people. Come to the Comic Con on June the ninth at the Scotiabank Center. And coming up, branch pickup, for anyone doing their yard cleaning, is taking up this week, May seventh to eleventh, so put your branches out at the road. They pick up, they should be at the curb by seven AM. Also, it's prescription drug drop-off. Niagara's First will take place May the twelfth from ten until three at either one of two locations. Lester B Pearson Park next to Mary Ward or at the Chippewa Arena. And again, that's May the twelfth from ten AM until three PM. You don't want to flush your prescription drugs down the toilet. That's not good for the animals that are in the environment, and it's not good for the environment, so please bring them there. And lastly, reminder, Twitter, @JimDeodaddy, if you want to follow the latest of what's going on at the city. We tweet daily, and we try to keep everybody up on what's happening in the city. And that concludes the announcements. Okay, moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First off, sorry, talking about all this Comic Con stuff, Captain Kirk. Canadian Tire Jump Start Charities requesting May twenty sixth be proclaimed as Jump Start Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay? Municipal Works Staff are requesting the week of May twentieth be proclaimed National Public Works Week in the city. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Maves. All those in favor? It's unanimous. CNIB is requesting that the month of May be proclaimed Vision Health Month, the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by councillor Maves, seconded by councillor Thompson. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Ontario Human Rights Commission is requesting June fifteenth be proclaimed Ontario Human Rights Code Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Regional municipality of Niagara is requesting lower-tier council representation on the region's water wastewater review task force. We're looking for a taker from Niagara Falls City Councillor. Yes, councillor Ainoni.
Thank you. I was, I was your representative on the wastewater, is this what?
Yes, would you like to do it again?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Because I understand it.
Seconded by councillor Thompson. All those in favor?
She has a lot of experience with water quality.
Excellent. All right, thank you. That's unanimous. Councillor Ainoni and second. Okay, councillor Thompson made the motion, and it was seconded by councillor Morocco. Is that, is that good? All right. And we'll call the vote one more time. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, excellent. The city of Welland is requesting that the city consider partnering with their municipality on a bid to be the location for the baseball softball for the 2015 Pan Am Games. Moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Cario, that we refer to staff. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Celebrate Old Downtowners. There's various requests and waiver fees related to the annual event. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. Are there any additional items for council, Mr. Clerk? Thank you. Next up is ratification of Committee of the Whole recommendations. Councillor Ainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Committee of the Whole. One, the Committee of the Whole minutes of April twenty fourth, two thousand and twelve be approved. Under reports, MW twenty twelve twenty-nine, peer review of development charges, background study, and policies. The other report be deferred to a future meeting upstairs in open council. Under MW two thousand and twelve thirty, regional Niagara waste contract, multi-residential waste collection. That the recollect support the award of the multi-residential front-end waste collection tender to BFI Canada Inc. And that council endorse the reduction in services recommended by Niagara's, Niagara region's waste management staff, and that council support the provisions of the region's solid waste bylaw, including the cancellation of front-end waste collection services to those properties that choose not to participate in the cart-based recycling program offered by the region as part of the base level of service. Under RNC two thousand and twelve oh nine, the slow pitch tournaments, the council endorsed the slow pitch championship weekend headquarters to be located at Chippewa Willoughby Memorial Arena on the following weekends. Can-Am weekend, May twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. Slow Pitch Nationals, August third to sixth, two thousand and twelve. And Slow Pitch National Championships, August twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, thirty-first to September second, September seventh to the ninth, and September fourteenth to the sixteenth, two thousand and twelve. And that the local youth organization, Niagara Falls Minor Hockey Association, Niagara Falls, great, I'll just say G, NF, GHA, and RMHAI's rentals are transferred from Chippewa Willoughby Memorial Arena to the Gale Center from September twelfth to the twenty-eighth, twenty-eight, twelve, to accommodate the SPN Championship September weekends, and I so move.
Okay, moved by councillor Ainoni, seconded by councillor Cario. Any discussion to the ratification? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Move one, two, and three, all related to special occasion permits?
Okay, three special occasion permit resolutions. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, will be consent agenda? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
It was noted in your additions just that the Arts and Culture Wall of Fame report's being polled.
Criteria?
Criteria.
Okay. So the two thousand and twelve tip. It's bold, okay. What's the wish of council, councillor Cario?
You pull two, two oh, one, two oh five, please.
Two thousand and twelve oh five?
Yes.
Any other requests? No? Okay, do we have a motion to receive? Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco, to receive the consent agendas with this exception of these two reports. All those in favor? Okay? Unanimous? So we'll deal with council remuneration, HR two thousand and twelve oh five, councillor Cario. Yep, councillor Cario.
Well, Your Worship, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the idea. I just disagree with doing it at this time. I think that councils should address the remuneration at the end of their term. I've said it all along. I'm not gonna support it until the end of the term and then make a recommendation. That's just my feeling, Your Worship.
Is your recommendation to approve it for two thousand and fourteen kind of thing, or are you, what's your suggestion?
I would suggest that I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm not moving it, I'm not gonna vote for it, so it's up to.
Okay. Okay, councillor Wing?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure this out. It said at their March twenty-second, two thousand and ten meeting, council passed a motion to defer a decision on their salary increases. And then at the meeting of October fourth, two thousand and ten, council again deferred it. And that was at the end of the previous council's term. There's an election after that. So I'm kind of confused just when we're deferring it to this time.
Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I tried to get this back on the books. I've been around too long to see what is done with remuneration when councils have to do it. All of a sudden, we're four years behind. And we're three years now. When it was brought up, I recall the former mayor suggesting a freeze with everybody. The staff did not get a freeze because they were given merit increases as far as they were concerned. So in my opinion, unless I'm wrong, and somebody can tell me that, there was no freeze there. A former mayor had a freeze, and then we found out that there was a thirty-nine-hundred-dollar vacation pay. And the council is sitting around here looking for one or two percent, or what's gonna happen in five years. I'll move, we have a review, and we should be getting an additional five thousand dollars. This is insignificant. It takes it out of the hands of the council. We never had to deal with it again, and to suggest that this is out of line is ridiculous. So I would so move that we approve the report.
Okay, motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor? Okay, I've got councillor Wing here, and then we'll get you up next, councillor.
Yes, councillor Thompson just reminded me of when I first came on the council in December of ninety-seven. One of the first things that council did was promote itself a twenty-two percent pay hike, which really was scandalous at the time. But the reason it happened was council had frozen its salary all through the nineteen nineties and was so drastically behind that some felt that it was necessary to play catch-up. Yeah, I'd hate to see this, I mean, it's already been stalled two years, I guess, waiting for another council to come in. And I'd just hate to see it stalled again, and, and we end up in that sort of situation once more. Because that really was a really controversial decision at the time.
Okay. Okay, we got councillor Ainoni, councillor Cario?
Let's be, let's be clear what we're talking here. We're talking forty-six hundred dollars a year more for nine of us. So do the math. How much are we really getting per month more? I, I, call me here to make the extra money, I'll come and do another night. Like, none of us are opposed to working. I think, I think it becomes a political football where nobody wants to address this. It's forty-six hundred dollars a year more in our budget for everybody. Well, it says per annum. This is the salary increase with the payroll, so I'm assuming it includes the mayor. It would not just be us. To me, forty-six hundred dollars a year is not going to kill anybody. So I, I, I'm gonna support it just because I think we've tossed it around. Staff didn't bring it back before the last election. If it were twenty-three percent, we'd be able to stand up here and say, no, no. It, it is so minimal, and it ties it to another negotiation which takes it out of the hands of the politicians, which I, I don't have a problem with.
Okay, councillor Cario?
Just don't want anyone to think that we haven't got an increase on this term. We have got an increase on this term. We, we are not getting more money on this term. We didn't, we, we, we get more money this term already. Okay?
Okay, councillor Peter Angelo?
Excuse me. Are you saying we've already got a raise this term?
I'm suggesting that council has already given themselves more money this term.
Can you clarify that? Because.
Forty-eight hundred dollars from the, not from the city, but the council is getting more money this term.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's a misstatement. That's been the last three years, and that was decision was made at the last, you're not getting any more now, councillor Cario, than you were getting at your past council term. No, you're not.
You got that money last term?
Yes, we did.
That's a lot of money.
But, but, and, and he's entitled to his opinion, but don't tell people we did this this term, because it was almost four years ago.
Okay, councillor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I just want to say that I'm not in favor of the motion simply because I feel that council was given a very generous increase, and I don't think that we've held the line for enough years to make up for it. That's all. And I know what councillor Cario is referring to.
Is there, is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so we've got the motion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion's defeated? Okay? The other option is, the option, if you wanted to. The other option is, the, the option if you wanted to bring the motion forward, possibly to have it kick in for 2014 for the next term is another idea, so you're not giving it to this council, you're giving it to the next one. You may want to deal with it that way.
Then I'll make that motion right now, so that clears out the debate before the next term. This will set the remuneration for the next term after the next, next council after the following election.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Iannone, seconded by Counsel Morocco. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, uh, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Well, to me, that would depend on whether or not we continue to ramp up the city's debt. I don't think we should give ourselves a raise if that's what we do.
Okay, all right, so we will call the vote. Uh, the, the vote is, uh, that this, um, bylaw, yeah, 99-22, would kick in after the next election, so it'd be for the ne, the new council. Okay? All, yes, Counsel Thompson?
Maybe if we're talking about this, maybe we should, uh, determine who's doing the work around the table here. I'd like to have a report, who sits on what committees, who attends the committees, uh, what work have they done, what responsibility, how much they're available during the day, and, uh, how much work are they doing for their remuneration? I'd like to, yeah, who, who, who does the work around the table?
Well, I'll tell you, how, why don't we, let's stick with the motion on the table, and, uh, we want, uh, okay, so what, everyone knows the motion right now, well, we got a motion on the table, let's deal with this. All those in favor? Okay, are you in favor? No? One, two, three, four, or five? Okay, the motion passes.
So who's opposed?
Uh, so, oh, you are in favor, or you're opposed, okay. So, opposed was Counsel Thompson, and...
Got it.
What? Okay, yeah, okay, great. All right, moving on. Property matters. I guess there's no one else present here that has an interest in, uh, L 2012-07 vacant surplus land on the west side of Palmer Avenue? Okay, so we're, a couple of time?
Approve the report.
Okay, so then we can, can we get a motion to approve the report? Counselor Maves, seconded by Counsel Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. Uh, bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments for us tonight?
No, your worship.
Okay, can we get a motion to introduce the bylaws? Counselor Peter Angelo, uh, moves for a first reading, and seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor?
Jim, can I pull one?
Uh, you want to pull one?
Yes.
Yes?
2012-31.
Uh, yeah. Okay. You can just indicate you're voting against it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. It's okay.
All right.
Okay. We have a motion, all those in favor of the bylaws for first reading? Okay, and noted that Counsel Gates is opposed to 2012-31. And a motion for second and third reading? Oh, no, did you want to see something first?
I gotta do my spiel. Uh, bylaws 2012-26 to 2012-33 read a first time.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves for a second and third reading. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Okay, bylaws 2012-26 to 2012-33 read a second and third time and passed.
Okay, new business, Counsel Iannone, Counsel Morocco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to bring up the Dr. Smith's interim report to the Niagara community on restructuring the Niagara health system. Um, we all eagerly waited Dr. Smith's report. We had a council, we got a council committee here that sat around, that, we had a committee of council that sat around putting, uh, recommendations to Dr. Smith. You and I had opportunities to speak to him, I know you've talked to him many times. I will have to say that I've read the report a number of times. Um, I've read the comments in the paper, I've been reading the, the reports we get from the Niagara Health Coalition. I also understand there's a meeting of the Niagara Health Coalition to talk about these, uh, these changes. I think it's tomorrow night, if I'm not mistaken, at the Spring Street, Thursday night? Thursday night at the Spring Street Legion. Um, I worked also with the Health Coalition as chair of our ad hoc committee. I will say that, for the most part, I, I, I support Dr. Smith's recommendations. But what I will say is this, I have to support Dr. Smith's recommendations on the firm belief that it's actually going to happen. I, I have a problem swallowing that the, the province, the government of the day is actually going to see through and build us an AgriSouth hospital three weeks after it cancels West Lincoln's hospital that they've been fundraising for years for. I have to take that leap of faith. I'm not quite there yet. I will say that we all had the Drummond report, we all read the Drummond report. The Drummond report had some really strong recommendations. Our casino staying open tells you how much the province thankfully listened to the Drummond report. So, as a politician who's very skeptic, I have to actually believe that Dr. Smith's recommendations are going to be adopted. I don't think in my lifespan I'm going to see it. I don't think our term on council, we're going to see it. But I, I, I hope that I'm wrong. I will say the parts that I was really alarmed at, and which I didn't understand, is part of Dr. Smith's recommendation is that the maternal child inpatient pediatric care in Niagara Falls, so to simple it down, it's Matt Child. Um, I ran my campaign on trying to save Matt Child. Um, Dr. Smith's recommendation is that maternity and pediatrics will temporarily move itself from the Niagara, Greater Niagara General, to the new regional, thankfully, they admit that now, new regional hospital in St. Catherine's. And then when we build our South Niagara Hospital, if it happens in our lifespan, we'll put Matt and Child back there. There isn't a doctor I spoke to, I actually was in the hospital while my husband was having a procedure, reading Dr. Smith's report on my iPhone, and the doctors were reading it off my iPhone, telling me, if you believe this, I have a bridge to sell you. If you lose a service from Niagara Falls and it transfers to St. Catherine's, there is no guarantee it's coming back. As a matter of fact, there's no reason politically for them to move it back. You have handed, you yourself, Mr. Mayor, have handed Dr. Smith all the statistics for Matt Child in Niagara Falls. So my suggestion, and at the end of Dr. Smith's recommendation, there is a portion where he says, I'm asking municipalities to put forward recommendations. I will, I will say that I believe this council's recommendation should be, if there's argument to relocate Matt and Child back to South Niagara because of the statistics here, that in itself is the argument to leave Matt and Child in Greater, in GNGH. I have argued we have to have a full-service hospital. We, we service 15 million tourists. As a matter of fact, I had hospital staff telling me that as they were reading the reports off of the Niagara Falls Review and Bullet Media and everything that was coming across our phones. The staff in there were talking about, they had no clue who I was, and I'm listening to their comments, putting them in my notes in my phone, so I can remember to give to you. Nobody who works in that system believes this is going to happen. That, that alarms me. But even more so, if we lose a service from here, they have not historically come back. So I would like, one of our recommendations, recommendations to go to Dr. Smith is, we do not believe you should move Matt Child from Niagara Falls to, to St. Catherine's on the hopes that we get it back. There are too many variables in that, and I will say, maternity is a small portion of what my concern is. I, I, I know friends who have gone in, had a baby, and been home the next day. It's a two-day event. If you're giving, if it, if everything goes well. But if you have a sick child who's admitted into a hospital, and they're there for five, six days for whatever reason, and you have three kids at home and you can't get to St. Catherine's, and/or the transportation isn't available to you, what are you going to do? You can take a city bus to GNGH. It is not going, it is not going to be a simple task for those who can't afford it and those who don't have transportation to get to that really poorly chosen site in St., I have to keep saying that, in St. Catherine's. So we can't lose those services here. There are senior women who count on gynecological care, the stats are there that shows those doctors are going to relocate to St. Catherine's. There is nothing good in that recommendation. So I'd like a recommendation to, from this council to be sent to Dr. Smith that, while we understand that he sees the growth here in Niagara in order to put those services back here, then keep those services here. If they're losing the numbers in St. Catherine's, then relocate that Matt Child department to GNGH and leave it in South Niagara where it's going to eventually be anywhere. Don't take it now, there's no common sense in that at all. And the other point in the, in the report that really, really was glaring to me is, still, they don't address transportation. He hopes that agencies will come forth and volunteer a transportation plan. Really? We kind of hoped that too, it didn't happen yet. Um, there is no money in the provincial budget, which is being cut. There is no money in our budget for transportation, clearly, I won't start on that one again. The transportation costs are not here. This doesn't work for residents in Niagara Falls, it doesn't work for moms, it doesn't work for families, it doesn't work for kids. So I strongly recommend that if we reconvene the ad hoc committee, or we put something forward to address Dr. Smith, that that's one of the issues, because we gave our word to the residents that we would continue to fight for the Matt Child full-service Niagara hos, uh, Greater Niagara General until we couldn't fight for it anymore, and he opened the door to allow us to do that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Iannone, seconded by Counsel Wing, that we send, uh, so are we sending him a, a, a letter, a resolution? What are you suggesting, Counsel?
Well, I, I, I believe that the end of this document says that recommendations for municipal leaders is welcome. I think we need to send in one voice. I think if it's the ad hoc committee, so be it. I think if it's not, and it's this council, I'm sure a number of other people are going to talk on this issue after me, and we all have portions of this report that we think could be amended for Greater Niagara General and the residents in Niagara Falls. So we send those recommendations to Dr. Smith as a council whole. I think the ad hoc committee had its place, but I think we have more strength now as municipal counselors, and I think the fight now has to come from this chamber, and I think we need to be really strong on it. Because I don't believe we're ever going to get a service back once they take it.
So, so do you want a resolution or a letter from?
Well, I think we should go, I, I, I believe other people are going to talk on this, and I, and I'm not sure how the, how, which is the stronger way to send it. Maybe the clerk has a recommendation, but I think there will be recommendations from this council that are more than just Matt Child.
Mr. Clerk, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I'd like to hear what all the suggestions are from the counselors. I mean, I, I clearly got the gist of what Counselor Iannone said, and I can obviously formulate that, and as you know, I always try to make you sound great in the, in the letters I send, so I will continue to do that.
So there is a motion on the floor for, for this recommendation. If we could pass that, then we'll put motions on the floor for the rest of recommendations, and we can send it as a whole. Can we do that way? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, is, is your discussion to the motion, Counsel Gates?
Yeah, I think, Janet, did you second?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, uh, Counsel Gates?
Yeah, thanks very much, and I certainly do appreciate, uh, Counselor Iannone raising the issue around, uh, maternity going to St. Catherine's. Um, obviously, uh, I, I've talked about this a number of times over the last little while, including, uh, phoning a local radio station this week. Uh, it's absolutely, uh, surprising to me, and I don't think anybody is going to say we don't want a new, another hospital. I don't know anybody's going to say, no, we don't want another hospital, so I don't think that's an issue with anybody, uh, in any of the communities right across Niagara. Um, but what's surprising to me is they came out with this document, um, this council in November, and we can argue whether it's late November or early December, had said that we have to have somebody do the review of a hospital improvement plan. Because that's the issue here. The issue here is, under the hospital improvement plan, it said to close the maternity in Niagara Falls, it said to close pediatrics in Niagara Falls, and mental health. Uh, that's under the hospital improvement plan. Uh, so the report is saying, send it to St. Catherine's, because that's what the hospital improvement plan's saying. The reason why the hospital improvement plan has said that all along is it's about profit in the St. Catherine's Hospital, which is a P3 hospital, which they're trying to make sure the corporation that's running that hospital is going to make money. And the word that, uh, Dr. Smith uses, which really drives me nuts, is, we talk about our loved ones as being having patients in the hospital, they talk about customers. Uh, healthcare is a basic human right, uh, in this country, I believe, right around the world. Uh, I'm not a customer, sorry to the healthcare system. Uh, when I get sick, I'm a patient. I rely on the quality healthcare that I know is in those hospitals, uh, but they have to give them the tools to do their job. So I have a real problem, uh, with having a report come out, uh, that doesn't address the hospital improvement plan, and now the residents in Niagara Falls are now going to lose services that this council for a number of years have been saying must stay in Niagara Falls. I've said this before, this is the honeymoon capital of the world. People come here to make babies, and here we're closing the maternity ward. It makes absolutely no sense to me. Uh, so, uh, on those points, uh, I think we should put a motion, but I think we should include the other services that we're losing within our community. Uh, I don't think profit should be ahead of, uh, of what we need right here in Niagara Falls. And, uh, I just got an email, uh, they were having a South Niagara meeting today, uh, in Port Cohber, and, uh, Dr. Jeff Remming is now saying that, uh, when people get sick, uh, we should actually be going to Buffalo, uh, rather than, uh, going to our local hospitals. Now, I haven't had a chance to read the whole report, but I'm going off the, uh, Wellon Review newspaper that I got about 20 minutes ago, so obviously I'll have to take a look at it. Uh, the reason why we're in this problem, quite frankly, and the, uh, infrastructure problems that they even have at the region, is because of location, and, and, uh, Counsel Iannone mentioned this, is location, location, location. They're trying to fix the mistake of location they made in the first place, and that's why they had to do, uh, the hospital improvement plan. So, um, I believe that we should be sending a message to, um, Dr. Smith as well. Again, uh, because, uh, like I said, I did call the radio station, uh, the other day, uh, was, um, to say, why didn't you do the hospital improvement plan? And I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Diodati, because he's told me he's raised this issue with, uh, with Dr. Smith a number of times. Um, why wouldn't you at least, uh, give us a response to, uh, to our request? Now, I've requested to him a number of times, not just at this council. Uh, I've done it, uh, personally in a, in a forum, and I've, now I've done it on, on the radio. Uh, so I think, uh, adding some of those other services to Counselor Iannone's, uh, uh, motion, I think, would be good, because I don't think we should lose any of our services here, uh, for the hospital in, uh, in St. Catherine's. And, uh, as far as the report goes, um, I think, uh, it'd be great if it happens. Uh, you know, uh, obviously, I'd like to have a lot of dialogue with the nurses and the doctors and all that to see how they feel about it, which I haven't had the opportunity to do, because it just happened. Uh, but, uh, it's, in Niagara Falls, we shouldn't be losing any of our services, and I think that message should be sent clear to, uh, Dr. Smith. Thank you very much.
Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that was included in my full-service hospital. Um, I, I pulled the report off the internet the day it came off, and, and Dr. Smith said, he, he just barely touches on the hip. He said the hip is not going, and remember, this is an interim document, so he's giving us a timeframe to speak on things. And, and he says the hip is being addressed in a different format. I'm not sure, quite sure what that means.
You told me that, too.
Yeah, and I'm not, and, and, again, I was kind of counting on it being an interim report, and we're going to get a full report later based on comment he gets from municipalities, which is why I think ours, it has to be strong. But, on, on another point, he talks about doctor retention here. Well, we've had a doctor recruitment committee forever. Uh, it, it tells you how many doctors we have a deficit, it projects the deficit that we're going to have. And, and I understand all that, we've been telling the province that the entire time it's been in the province, uh, the government that it is, but I'm watching every day the Minister of Health go on, on the television, picking a fight with the doctors over their salaries. And doctors are coming out, I, I don't have a problem with what doctors are paid. I think if you have a 5,000 patient load, and if you are working, my doctor goes in at 7:30, if you're working 7:30 to 5:30 and you're on call, whether it's a rotation or not, I'm hard pressed to be arguing with my doctors. I need them, and they're there when I need them. I'm not going to argue their pay. I have no understanding of a government who knows the deficit we have in doctors, yet these are the people you decide to pick a, a financial fight with. Really? You have just impeded every municipality who is trying to have a doctor recruitment and bring them here. So they want to build a Niagara South Hospital, this is where my skepticism comes in, the Niagara, a new Niagara South Hospital. Who are we going to staff it with? Because you've pretty much in your fight with the doctors that you've now picked, really giving the young students who are in med school a second look on where am I going to go in Ontario? a second look on where am I going to go in Ontario? So, I mean, I, I think politicians need to come forward and say to the docs, look, we have your back. We understand. We need you in your community and that we're deficit. But I don't think we should be creating fights that prohibit them from picking Ontario and/or our new South, what is that? Our new South Niagara Hospital is somewhere they want to serve. Am I interrupting you?
No. We're good.
Oh, wait.
Malfunctioning, uh, unit.
Okay. So I, I just think if you're picking a fight, you've picked it with the wrong people at the wrong time. It's kind of like saying nurses are underworked and underpaid. And this, this fight makes no sense to me. And I think we need to go on record in supporting our doctors too. Because if we don't, we're going to have nobody to recruit to this imaginary Niagara South Hospital. And I know they'd like us to speak with one voice and everybody be behind them. But that's really hard to do after watching 10,000 people come out in West Lincoln and argue a promise and a commitment that was made by the province. So I think we need to put a resolution in there to support our docs. And we need to see a stronger, a stronger definition on what they believe needs to be changed in the hip. So if those can be added to the resolutions also. I think anything that addresses his recommendations that we don't agree with before the full report comes out, we, we should send everything that we think needs to happen.
Okay. So we have a big motion. Okay, it was, okay, uh, councillor Kerrio?
Just a silly question. Does anyone know how much they're made, they make? How much they're paid, the docs? So we're going to vote that we don't have this argument with the docs. Anybody know how much they make?
Thank you. It's not, I, I don't care what they make. I think they make their, they make their agreement through their association. But I'm watching Deb Matthews every day talk about how they're-
Are you slightly, like, know how much they make?
No, I, well, I, I don't think if I picked up a doc and called, they'd tell me. But I think if I picked up a phone and called the doc, they'd say to me, look at-
Not enough.
Yeah, pretty much. But our nurses will tell you that too. And they earn it.
Okay. So any others, yeah councillor Peter Angelo? Oh, no, okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, the motion was made by councillor Iainoni, seconded by councillor Wing. Okay. So we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous?
Sheep.
Okay, next up councillor Morocco?
Your worship, just one, uh, quick announcement. I'd like to just, uh, I'd just like to wish, Martin Shepherd and Fraser, uh, a happy 125th anniversary.
Who's that?
Sorry, I think they're distracted here.
Councillor Iainoni, someone over here is trying to get your attention. And, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate Martin Shepherd and Fraser on 125th anniversary operating. So, good for them.
Yeah. Oh, thank you very much. That's very nice. Long time. Longer than the city's been a corporation. Councillor Wing?
Uh, yes. A few nights ago, somebody from, I can't remember the name of the company, Ontario Energy or something like that was at our door. And, uh, the gentleman said he was there to inspect our furnace and hot water here.
One of those, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh,
And your sledge pump.
Yeah. It's sort of like, oh, well, didn't you get the notice? We sent you a notice, you know? And they were there to inspect our rental appliances. Well, guess what? We don't rent anything. Get lost. But, uh, I, I was concerned about the fact that we have an aging population and, you know, people who are still very smart, sometimes the memories start to slip a little bit. And if somebody says, well, we sent you the notice, then they go, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. And let them in. And also there's, there's a real danger here. Um, so, uh, this is not my suggestion, but it's somebody else's. And I said, that's great. I'll bring it up at council. I'd like to put a resolution on the floor to the federal government to initiate a do not call registry for door to door solicitation, similar to the do not call registry that, uh, is maintained for phone solicitation. That will-
So do not knock? Is that what you're saying? Like a do not?
Basically do not call. If the address is listed with the registry, then salespeople are not to call at that address. And I think that would stop a lot of salespeople making false claims and badgering older people. When, when gentleman I know said, you know, these guys were back at my parents' house three times. So they, they know who's the most vulnerable to, uh, getting taken in by their claims and letting them in. So, yeah, that's my concern. And a lot of times it's supply by night type of firms that do this. Reputable firms are in the phone book. There's good word of mouth in the community. They don't need to go door to door making false claims and pressuring people with, you know, with lies and things like that. So that's my resolution, is asking the federal government to initiate a do not call registry for door to door solicitation. And that'd be circulated to municipalities throughout Canada.
Good idea. Okay, motion by councillor Wing. Uh, seconded on the do not call door to door, a motion to go to the, to the federal government, councillor Iainoni. Uh, well, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. That's good. Yeah. And the other thing that, that's key is you don't want to let them in and see your serial number. Once they get the serial number, that's how they'll sometimes justify the contracts and they're very difficult to get out of. So, and especially, it's nice if you can put your parents or aging grandparents on a do not knock list or call list, just to save that. And this way, if they do get duked into signing something, it'd be nice if you can point to that and say they shouldn't have been there in the first place. Right? So yes, councillor Wing?
That, that would certainly help. And I'd say, yes, since we're on to that as well, just a public service warning, do not ever show these people at your door your gas bill or your hydro bill or any kind of energy bill whatsoever. It's not their business. And, uh, if you do show it to them, they get the account number and then they've got you hooked.
That's absolutely right. And would we share this also, I guess, with our MP as well, right, to take it with them?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other new business?
You take some one thing.
Uh, councillor Peter Angelo?
Oh, thanks. I got one too, but I can go first.
Gentleman.
No, I don't have that many, your worship. I only have three. Um, I, I just, uh, was wondering though, when I was talking about the boxer earlier, I know I had mentioned to Carolyn downstairs, she was one of the colleagues from council. Um, so was Gary, uh, so was Pat, so was Kim. And I don't know if I mentioned Dave Mahalchuk as well. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, he did?
So, because I mentioned him downstairs, but sometimes when you stand up and speak, you don't remember everything, your worship. So, apologize, Ted. Um, okay, first item, your worship, was the Niagara Falls community outreach. I know they sent all of council an invitation, uh, for June 3rd. They're having a fundraising dinner, I believe it's at St. Anne's Hall. Um, I, I don't like the practice of, uh, standing up and committing the city to tables because Mr. Iarifida can tell me that it goes against our policy. And we all have a bit of an expense account. And, your worship, I'm hoping that, uh, that we can keep sending out reminders to council about this dinner and that somehow we can form a table just by council sort of signing up to go. I know that we were, um, requested to volunteer for them, um, I believe about a year and a half ago when they were going through their fundraising campaign. And I know a number of people went out to the Gail Center. I didn't actually make it, but I know a number of people that did, uh, and tried to raise money on their behalf. It'd be nice if we could have a good showing account or at their dinner, your worship. That was the first item. So I'll volunteer myself for two tickets anyway.
So the, the date again is?
It's June 3rd.
What day is June 3rd?
I believe it's a Sunday night.
Sunday, June 3rd at?
Uh, tickets at St. Anne's Hall. And, uh, tickets, I believe, are $25. I think that's what it is for fundraising dinner for-
Community outreach.
Niagara's community outreach program, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, second item, your worship, was, uh, we all got the email again about the bee situation, um, that the one resident faces. And I know, your worship, that, um, that it's not within our jurisdiction. I don't know if anyone had a chance to watch the videos or even get out to the house. Um, I know it's not in our situation, but I know I definitely wouldn't want to live next to it. So perhaps if we could even just pass on a resolution to, uh, is it O M A R F A?
Omaphra.
Omaphra?
These inspectors have been around and they-
I know they have. I guess my only concern is, is the last email that came through from the resident just said that, um, uh, just said thank you to the inspector. And will this be done in a timely manner? I just kind of wanted to send a resolution to, uh, O M A F R A, um, and ask them, you know, to support it being done in a timely manner. And if the resident where the bees are is not willing to take care of it, your worship, then perhaps, uh, O M A F R A, whatever they're called, can step in, can step in to take further action. So I mean, perhaps if we can just send on a resolution supporting them, I think that that would be great.
Okay.
I know it's out of our jurisdiction, but I don't know what else we can do. But I wouldn't want to live beside it. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
Motion by councillor Peter Angelo and seconded by councillor Maves, that we send a resolution to O M A R F A or whatever, one of those versions. Um, and it'll be, uh, it'll definitely be, you'll check, Mr. Clerk, what the proper acronym is for that.
Well, I know the proper acronym.
It's O M A F R A.
O M A?
It's called Omaphra.
Okay, good.
O M A F R A.
Is there any discussion to the motion for a resolution? Go forward. Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
One other quick one, your worship. Um, I just want, I just wanted to pass a motion and staff bring back to council a report on, uh, two things. Um, one would be the building permit fees and the other would be the signed permit fees. Um, my understanding from an email from Mr. Iarifida earlier this week is that the city does have the ability to, uh, charge people double permit fees if they don't come down and receive a building permit first. I think, um, one thing that, that makes people who do abide by the law upset is when people that don't abide by the law are not, um, given anything more than what they're given. Meanwhile, they came down and followed the proper procedure. If that's the case, your worship, then it would just appear that there's no deterrent in place. Mr. Iarifida, um, was saying earlier that we have the ability. He can't remember whether or not we are charging, uh, double permit fees, but perhaps through a report, um, he'd be able to tell council, your worship. And then the other one was, uh, and then the other one was signed permit fees. Um, I know, uh, a few years ago, it was passed from, I believe, bylaw to building. And I just wanted status on where we were with the signed permit fees, whether or not we're still collecting the same law that we were back then. And I know Mr. Beman had his hand up. Maybe he can clarify some. So I'd make a motion, anyway, your worship, that council just received an update report.
Uh, I was just going to assure councillor Peter Angelo that we do actually have in our bylaw, charge those extra fees. And to my knowledge, they are regularly charged for people that start without a permit. There is a ceiling on it. So that if you're, if it's a relatively small fee, it would be double. There's a ceiling of $5,000 in the bylaw. So the ultimate penalty for somebody who starts something really big would be $5,000. But we can confirm that in the report as well, but just to pass the information on you right now.
Is there a reason there's a ceiling on that? I'm just kind of curious, Mr.?
Um, it, it's a matter of being able to defend the bylaw if it were challenged. In fact, uh, Hamilton's bylaw was actually challenged. And, uh, for whatever reason, the initial judge that appeared in front of struck it down, having an extra fee for starting without a permit. His reasoning was so bizarre that when they got to the Court of Appeal, the Court of Appeal actually reversed the onus and told the respondent, you go first, because we can't figure out why we would ever uphold this decision. Anyway, be that as it may. Um, the, the main reason for having the ceiling is because, uh, building bylaws ultimately have to be, the fees ultimately have to be justified as being in some way related to the costs of administering the system. And so if, if you're finding, if you're finding some guy who's building a big building, like, you know, half a million dollars, um, then it starts to become to the point where you wouldn't be able to defend it. You just can't tie that at all to the extra cost caused by the, by the person starting first. The 5,000 ceiling though, is one of the things we can look at when we're answering councillor Peter Angelo's inquiry, might be a little low now in the modern, in the modern context. Because some of the buildings that we've had start without permits were spectacularly valuable. And perhaps a little more disincentive is required.
So we've got a motion to have the, these two reports come forward, moved by councillor Peter Angelo and seconded by councillor Wing. Any other discussion on that? Uh, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay. Any more councillor Peter Angelo?
Um, no.
It's good for today?
I, 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 I'll go first.
No, we're good. Councillor Gates, did you have some?
And then I'll go after, because it's, it's your thing.
Thank you, councillor Gates. Um, I passed along a template to our, our clerk about a follow-up log. Some of the councillors have asked me in the past about motions that they brought forward or resolutions. In the Parks Commission, we have a follow-up log that comes to us every meeting. And it gives us a report on, on, do we have that? That, do you have that? And is it something that we could have in our package?
Do you guys receive a similar, uh, format, what, every four months, I believe, through the CAO's office?
Every four months. Could we have it a little more often? I don't, just a, because we already have it.
Would you like it?
We did it every meeting, uh, at the Parks Commission, a follow-up. And he has the template on who's doing-
And what is it exactly?
It's just a format on any motions or resolutions that were still outstanding with the council. And the action that's taken to date, the date that they were moved at this council, action taken to date, who's responsible to bring it forward, that type of thing.
Okay.
So that we have a, a constant look at where we are with certain motions that the council's put forward.
Should we make this into a motion?
If we already have it, I'm just asking. Maybe we can get it more, get it more often.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, councillor Peter Angelo?
Worship, I gladly support that. That was going to be my other new business is that, I mean, I came to council last May, and Mr. Iarifida will attest, um, with an issue about the drainage of swimming pools. It was passed on to staff. The residents are still waiting for a reply, your worship. So, um, it's a full year right now. So.
Okay. So, so, so suggestion, I mean, do we, do we put a motion together? Or do we, is it direction to staff? What do you recommend, Mr. Clerk?
Well, you already get it. It goes in your package. Uh, but you've only been getting it maybe once every four months. But that was the agreed upon frequency based on, I believe, a report that the CAO brought forward. I mean, we can, uh, we can bring it, I, I think the next thing we'll do is we'll bring it forward as soon as possible that we can put it together. And then you can have a look at it and you can make a suggestion if you want it more frequently.
Okay. Okay. So we're good with that? You councillor Peter Angelo?
Worship, perhaps it isn't only a matter of getting the list and, and beside every item saying ongoing. But perhaps it's a matter of getting some of these items off the list. Again, it was a simple concern that, uh, with the drainage of swimming pools, it's now a year later, one full year, and the residents still don't have a response. It's not fair. So, I mean, I can get a report that, you know, that, that list drainage of swimming pools and right beside it says ongoing, really doesn't help me much. So.
Maybe an expected completion date or something like that should be another column?
Oh, that'd be great.
It's already in the one you get. We put it in your package.
We've enjoyed it for how many years?
Same thing. A, a year isn't bad. You should-
So, so the, the idea is that we'd like to get it more often? Is that right? So we're good with that? That's good? Okay. Everyone heard the message. Um, councillor Morocco?
Well, I just, if you don't mind, your worship, I'd just like to also add that that would also go for the hydro too. I would like to see that there'd be a column that any of the motions that were made. I think it, uh, was at the last meeting, we saw that we had actually brought forward another motion, but the motion was already on the table from November, uh, 2011 and still hadn't been dealt with. So I think that's where this is really all transpired from. And we're just looking to have some more accountability. And I like the idea that councillor Kerrio had said that, that the, at the Parks Commission, they use it and they actually say what motions have been, uh, dealt with and all the motions, uh, pretty much as to date. So I think, you know, we don't know. We pass a motion and then it's up to staff. Well, then, you know, sometimes in organizations, we think staff have dealt with it, only to find out if it comes back again, it hasn't been dealt with. So I think in all fairness, we'd like to see a tracking record. And I support what Revick's going with that.
It's a good idea. Accountability. It helps make everyone more accountable. Uh, is there any other, what's that?
We already have it.
We already have it. Now, is there any other motions before councillor Gates closes out the, uh?
Well, it's because I'm doing an update on yours, since all.
Okay, councillor Gates?
Yeah, that's why I held back. Because, uh, when Jim did his report, uh, I think he, he missed, uh, one of the ones that was, uh, um, very successful on the weekend on the clean sweep. Uh, unbelievable event on Saturday on the 5th that Jim came and opened up. And, uh, Vic was the master of ceremonies. We had, uh, over 350 volunteers, uh, to go out and clean our parks and our streets. It was in a, I, I think it's just an incredible event, event, about 100 more than last year. Uh, so that's obviously, uh, it's a very good thing. But I think the thing that I enjoyed the most was the young people that were there. Uh, the number of young kids, number of students, uh, that came. They're there with their parents and they, they went out and, and did that. And I had one little seven-year-old say, why is there so much garbage in our parks? Uh, so I think that's, uh, kind of sums it up on, uh, what we're doing here. So it was an incredible event. Uh, I think we should thank the sponsors for, uh, sponsoring that event, particularly McInangel's, because that's where it was at. And to staff, I thought it was well organized, uh, well-run, uh, and a great event. And hopefully we can get 700, uh, out next year. So I just wanted to give an update on that event.
Yeah, well done. And thanks for reminding me. I, uh, appreciate that. And, and yourself and councillor Peter Angelo being there first thing and, uh, kicking off the event was a big success. I was in a real good mood. The weather was great that day. It was a perfect day to, to go about doing that. What a neat scene to see all these fluorescent vests all over the city as people are cleaning up the city. And, and it's almost contagious where you want to, you know, step out. And, and you know, just on that same note, I should mention it was neat. As I was driving down the street one day, I saw people picking up garbage along the trail, along the side of City Hall and down on Queen Street at the foot and, and near Bridge Street. So I finally saw someone. I pulled over and asked who they were. And it was Hatch, uh, next door. And they had all their employees out there that day cleaning up the city. And I thought, what a great thing when people take ownership of the city like that. So thank you to you two for, uh, making this event happen and so successful. And it was really, it was huge, huge success. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Worship, I just wanted to mention as well, um, I know councillor Wing had been involved with it for many years in the Park and City Committee, chaired it many times. Um, but perhaps for next year, I mean, and, and I know we have, uh, Jeff on it and he did a great job this year.
Grouchy.
But it would be nice, your worship, if we could market it to more businesses. Because just like you mentioned, Hatch, that's one thing that I didn't lose this year. Like aside from families that came out, there was a lot of businesses that came out. So there's a lot of colleagues together that were picking up garbage. Whether it was around